Hey, good evening, everybody. I'd like to call this meeting to order. Welcome to the City Council Regular Meeting. Please prepare for the invocation and the Pledge of Allegiance.
Our gracious heavenly Father, we come to you this evening. Thank you for this opportunity to do the business of the city. I just ask that your spirit would be present here and that you would guide and direct our deliberations, and may it be honoring to you. In Jesus' name I pray. Amen.
Pledge of Allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Will a clerk please call the roll?
Yes, sir. Members Olson, Barrantyne.
Here.
Gillett.
Present.
Martinez.
Present.
Russell.
Present.
Gates.
Present.
Mayor Jefferson.
Here.
Present, one absent, and one absent being Councilmember Olson.
Thank you. I'll move us on to Agenda Item 5. This is consideration of minutes of previous session. I would entertain a motion on 5A.
I'll move to approve 5A.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any comments, discussions, or changes?
Mr. Mayor, I'll be abstaining this. I was not at that meeting.
Thank you for the record. Seeing no further comments, please vote.
All votes have been cast. Let the record show five ayes and one abstention, the one abstention being Councilmember Gillett.
Thank you. We're going to move on to Agenda Item 6. This is recognition of scheduled public comment. We have one speaker signed up this evening. This is Coen Dickerson, an Inglewood resident addressing council regarding communication. Good evening, Mrs. Dickerson.
Good evening. Coen Dickerson, 2835 South Pennsylvania Street. Just two things tonight. Since the entire city has a speed limit of 30 miles per hour, even residential zones, except as otherwise posted for school zones, I would ask you to reduce the residential streets that are not snow removal streets to 25 miles per hour, as it appears that the speed limits are merely advisory to most drivers. I would include a large section of South Broadway that is within the Inglewood city limits to facilitate the Old Town Inglewood goals. Second, I thought since, absent a scheduled history lesson from our esteemed citizen of the year, Doug Kohn, I would offer a little one of my own, in the reason for the season known as July 4th, and a suggestion for future focus in the celebration for years to come. Holiday is a contraction of holy day, and goodbye is a contraction of God be with you. In the sense that the Declaration of Independence, which was signed and memorialized on July 4th, was committed to divine providence and the Creator, nation's God, in that sense, July 4th is a holy day, and the Declaration of Independence should be remembered on its special day. The Declaration of Independence expresses the foundational principles that resulted in the Constitution. I'll quote part of it. "The first part of the second paragraph sets forth natural rights. We hold these truths to be self-evident, that all men are created equal, that they are endowed by their Creator with certain inalienable rights, that among these are life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness; that to secure these rights governments are instituted among men, deriving their just powers from the consent of the governed, laying its foundation on such principles, and organizing its powers in such form as to them shall seem most likely to affect their safety and happiness." The bulk of the Declaration is a list of why and how the British government was tyrannical, and what good government should be, and why the British, and perhaps our own now, is not, but I will leave that assessment to your individual reflections. The last paragraph reads in part, "We therefore, appealing to the supreme judge of the world for the rectitude of our intentions, do solemnly publish and declare that these united colonies are, and of right ought to be, free and independent states, and for the support of this declaration, with a firm reliance on the protection of divine providence, we mutually pledge to each other our lives, our fortune, and our sacred honor." I submit to you that the Declaration of Independence ought to take its rightful position and prominence at the center of any July 4th holy day. Fireworks, while a symbol of bombs bursting in air, are a very poor substitute and distraction from the gravity of and what the Declaration of Independence meant and means to the founding, the Constitution, and the world. Thank you all for being here tonight.
Thank you. Mrs. Dickerson, let me see if council has any questions for you this evening. Seeing none, I'll thank you for coming and speaking. Our next agenda item is Agenda Item 7. This is recognition of unscheduled public comment. We do have several speakers signed up. The first is Liz Weber, here to speak about a fence issue, and on deck is Rhonda Falletti. Good evening.
Hello. Liz Weber, 4853 South Fox. I was here about two months ago presenting a fence issue that all of you should now be aware of. I'm here to update you on that. Two months ago, we were told by many members of council and staff, we apologize for the situation, we will work with you to remedy it. So, since then, we've met with Murphy Robinson two separate times for several hours. Out of that meeting came a memo with options the city felt were appropriate to move forward. First option was to go through the variance process, and the second was for them to work with and pay a contractor to bring our fence down two feet. With all the conversations that we've had with council and staff, bringing our fence down two feet has never been an option. So, I sent back that memo with amendments. We are, we have shown that we are willing to work with the city by spending a lot of time in these meetings. Murphy was conducting an investigation, and apparently there was a very large HR investigation as well. So, we're willing to do the variance, even though I'd like it on record noting that we do not feel safe with this option because of the hostile renters next door to us. We've made that very clear. It's been brought to our attention that aggressive comments have been made on next door, and it's also been, Councilman Yates actually brought us our attention to some things as well with the neighbor, but we're willing to compromise. Sent back the amendment stating that if-then situation, if the variance was not approved, then the city would work directly with our contractor to modify the fence to reflect a retaining wall as defined by city code. Now, if the city is willing to pay our contractor to bring it down two feet, they should be willing to pay to bring it into code to reflect the retaining wall. I did not just come up with this scenario on my own. This was a specific solution scenario given to my partner and I in a meeting with Brad Power, the Director of the Community Development Program. That memo was sent, I got the memo sent back to me. Almost none of my amendments were made, and in the email, there was no reflection of why none of these amendments were made. It was just sent to me and said, if you sign this, we can move forward. I'm really frustrated at this point. We've gone through your process, we've been patient, we've been working with the city. We have gone above and beyond what an average citizen would do. We went to code, we emailed code, police were called, the impact team was involved. We were told to build a fence, which we went to the Community Development Department to tell us how to build it. We got an email saying, sorry, we made a mistake, you're wrong. So, now, we went to council. We were told by many of you, trust us, we'll do this, we'll work it out. We were told by city staff the same thing. I would like to know now who we are supposed to trust in this city as a citizen. You are elected officials. I understand it's the city attorney's job to protect the interests of the city and as well as the city manager.
Ms. Weber, could I get you to conclude your comments?
But it is yours to help protect your citizens, and so today, we would like to know what is happening with this fence.
Thank you, ma'am. Let me see if we have any questions from council for you. Councilmember Barrantyne.
I have a couple of questions. The first time that you came, because the drawings were that it was a retaining wall, two-foot retaining wall, then the fence, and then some kind of lattice work at the top, and it was my understanding that the first time that you came and presented, that you said you were told that you needed to put some flower boxes or something that would then justify the retaining wall portion of it. Wasn't that one of the solutions? Why wasn't that?
Well, that's exactly why I said in my amendment, the city will work directly with contractor to modify the fence to reflect a retaining wall as defined by city code. This was the flower box option given by Brad Power. That was because in your city code, retaining wall is simply, I think, holding back earth. So, that was his solution.
And is that still one of the solutions?
What I just read was what I had sent over to the city as, however the city wants to bring it into code to reflect a retaining wall.
And maintain this height that, according to you, has resolved the issue with, that the impact team and the police told you the fence should resolve?
Correct.
At the height that it does?
Correct.
How many times did you, since you've come previously, or the first time that you came with this issue, and obviously, if the city is willing to pay for something, there's at least some admittance that there's some, they're trying to work with you, and that they're agreeing that they didn't handle it as well as they could ever give you the advice, so they are willing, and you have documentation that says that they're willing to pay for something?
Yes.
Okay. Then, how many times did you meet with anybody after the first time that you came and brought this issue to council?
We met with Murphy and a woman from IT department for almost two hours, and that was to give our side of the story. Apparently, there was some large investigation going on. And then, I personally met with Murphy a second time to go over the options that the city were going to present to us. And then, since then, it's just kind of been a waiting game, waiting to hear back and forth via email.
So, when was the meeting with Murphy, and how long did you wait to hear back? Why are you saying it's a waiting game?
The first meeting, I have it written down in my other notes, but it was maybe April. Murphy should have those dates. And then, it was almost, and I understand, he said that the city attorney needed to approve it, so it was over 20 days when I didn't hear back.
Okay. And you keep referring to an investigation. What are you being investigated for?
I don't think I was being investigated. I was told that HR was conducting an investigation.
And what information were you given on the HR investigation? I assume that they're telling you that there is an employee or a process here? They told you that they were investigating an employee?
They didn't know. He just said that their, HR was conducting a full investigation.
Okay. I'm just confused on the information that as public you're being given on internal human resources investigations, and if you had any other information, or why that was even relevant to yours.
No, and we're not looking for, to embarrass the city. We're not asking to know who or any, I mean, I don't actually, I don't care. I don't care. What I do care about is this has been affecting my life for months, and the reason we are here, the whole reason, is 100 percent because the city told us to build the fence the way we did. We would never, we would not be in this position, period. We did nothing wrong. Nothing.
Okay. Thank you. I appreciate the additional information.
Thank you. Mr. Robinson, did you have something to add there?
Sure. First off, I want to thank you for coming. There are, there's a few things I want to address. First off, never do we disclose HR investigation items. However, this was brought to council, and there was some items in which, some allegations and some elements of this where we were told our staff gave someone the wrong information. Therefore, it made an HR issue. What I did is I wanted to assure, I'm sorry, give me your last name again.
Ms. Weber.
Mrs. Weber, thank you. I wanted to assure Ms. Weber that that portion of it was being handled. That is all that Ms. Weber was told there. In terms of the elements of this, so I've separated it into two separate elements, the HR piece handling and making sure our people are properly trained in the HR pieces there, but also making sure Ms. Weber gets a solution to her problem. What I've had trouble doing is finding out what legal options do I have to bring Ms. Weber within the authority of the city manager's office, as well as the authority of the city. We came up to the conclusion, Ms. Weber and I together, that we could go through the variance process, but we also want to have an option that if the variance doesn't work. So, that option was either to build the retaining wall, or to bring down the eight-foot fence to six feet. In talking to the city attorney and in reviewing the code myself, where I'm, the reason Ms. Weber didn't get an email back from me this last time after version two, was that I'm not sure that we can, as a city, authorize the use of, the city creating a condition for, for example, the retaining wall. You're creating the condition for building what it retains. And so, that's been the issue, is can we actually rebuild a retaining wall when the thing that you're retaining wasn't there in the first place? And so, that's what I've been researching, and I want to so easily tell Ms. Weber, yes, we'll build a retaining wall for you, it'll be done, but I don't then want you all to come back to me and say, well, Murphy, you violated code. And so, that's kind of where I'm at now.
Can I clarify one thing you said? But you are okay? She is correct in saying that she has been offered the alternative that the city will pay to bring her eight-foot fence down to six feet?
Absolutely.
Because they believe that there was misinformation given to them?
Absolutely.
That led to an eight-foot fence. But, we're not willing to go ahead and pay that, but you're saying it would be against our ordinance to go ahead and pay, whether it's the same amount or less, to go ahead and create the condition that would make the retaining wall?
That is incorrect. You are very incorrect here.
Then, the other thing is?
If I can address what you just said?
Okay. And then, I just have one more clarif-
I did not, I did not say that, and the reason I didn't say that is I didn't address that yet.
Okay.
I have not sent Ms. Weber, Ms. Weber just sent me an email that asked me, well, will the city be willing to pay for a retaining wall? I'm still researching. I want to say yes, but before I have the elements that allow me to say yes, I didn't respond because I want, I don't want to say, no, Ms. Weber, we can't do that. If I say no, I want to give her why we can't do it.
And in all fairness, that was an issue that was brought up by our Community Development Department in the first place as an option, and that's why I believe it was ever on the table. The second thing was, I believe, the first time you came was because the Community Development Department submitted a posting on your property, submitted you to go to a variance process without your permission or without you filing for one, and that was the case when you had come before.
They had a sign made for us and dropped it off at our house. I don't know what-
Right. And I kind of also wanted to make sure that at some point, we addressed that issue as well, that this process went through without them applying for it, asking for it, and that they were given a posting for their property that they didn't ask for. So, if they, and it seems like they kind of wanted to push them to go through this variance process before, and that wasn't even done with their permission or at their request previously, so if we can kind of figure out how we're doing our process.
So, and I can, I can address that as well. One element, one thing that the, in this investigation, Community Development thought they had consensus, verbal consensus from Ms. Weber to move forward on that. While paperwork was moving forward to get that process rolling, clearly, they were on two different pages. That's why Ms. Weber and I are making sure that we, or at least I'm making sure that I draft everything and write it down, and we both have our signatures on how we want to move forward. And so, yes, it's been, this process has taken a lot longer than I have expected myself, but I will tell you that I want to make sure that we get to yes for Ms. Weber, but we also make sure we right this wrong for her, but do it in a way that she won't have to come back here and say, well, you guys built this retaining wall, number one, now it's built wrong, or now not to code.
Well, if the city does it, we won't do it wrong, would we?
So, I will say this, though, if you all give me consensus, because I think where we were at was, we needed some policy direction, and that if you all give me consensus to build the retaining wall, we can go there. We can do that.
Well, I don't know if it's an option.
And so-
But I just have one more question on the variance thing, since that's still on the table, since we-
We could hold our questions for staff, perhaps, until the council responds to this question.
Well, it would have to do with questions for her, if it's still on the table then, and she's saying that that was-
I'm sorry, ma'am. I'm saying no questions for staff at this time here. We can come back to this under member-
Is the, Ms. Weber, is the city still willing to pay for the variance like they were before? It does cost to do a variance for the Board of Adjustments and Appeal and have your property posted. They obviously did that process and paid for that previously. Have they offered that if you go through that variance process, that they'll pay for that?
But I would like to, that we are in fear of our neighbor in this public process. So, and then, I also, may I comment on something that Murphy said?
Yes, ma'am. Very briefly, if you don't mind.
So, just, so, I understand that they're trying to investigate this, but in the email he sent back to me that took over 20 days, there was no mention that he was still investigating my remedy that I put forth. Mind you, a scenario that was already told to us that we could do by Brad Power. So, now, we're getting into a situation where we would have been misinformed by the Director a second time. So, thank you.
Mayor Protem Gillett.
Ms. Weber?
Ma'am, I think you got a couple more questions here.
I just wanted to make sure I have clarity. Were you put in the variance process and, without your permission, or did, were you given a date that it could be started by?
No. So, we, so, we were given two options in that meeting with Brad and Audra. One, go to a variance, or two, we could resubmit plans to build a retaining wall that would then be within code.
Then, no one forced you into a variance process, or brought a notice board and put it in your yard?
Yes, they did.
They did?
They put the notice, they brought the notice board to us and said, with a huge post, and said, you need to post this. And mind you, the day that they scheduled for the variance, I was out of town.
Okay. Thank you. I just want to make sure it was clear.
Thank you, ma'am. Seeing no further questions, I appreciate you coming and speaking this evening. Our next speaker is Rhonda Falletti, also speaking about a fence, and on deck is Kathleen Bailey. Good evening, ma'am.
Rhonda Falletti, 4853 South Fox. Mr. Robinson, I don't know how you can sit there and say that you didn't tell us that putting landscaping in was still up in the air of whether or not that was an option. You didn't respond. You basically, essentially said, no. Our option was you do the variance, and if the variance is not approved, then the city will pay to have the fence brought down to six feet. End of discussion. So, Liz bounced it back in your court, saying, no, if, that's not an option for us, here it is. And so, the ball just keeps getting bounced back and forth, and I am fed up. I'm so tired of it. It's a game. It's a game, and I'm so tired of your apologies. Apology, I mean, apologies with not, without any accountability. Our neighbor is a psychopath, and I want to know what you think, how you would feel. Okay, so this fence is solving our problem, number one, okay? That's the most important thing. When the psychopath neighbor, you want to come and cut the fence down, and then we have issues with this neighbor, and he hurts one of our animals, he vandalizes our property, he kills lizardi, the guy's a psycho. Have you read his stuff online? It's a manifesto. Then what? You're supposed to warn, warn city officials, warn the police when there's, when there's behavior that's, you know, alarming and this and that. Oh, it's out there. We were told by the police that our best solution was to put up the fence, and that's why we did it. So, I'm really tired of the apologies. And your investigation was because of your process, because the city's process was not followed. We were given the wrong information. Our house is divided. This has caused so many problems in our house, and Liz is still up here fighting. I'm not fighting for this stupid fence anymore. I want to pack my bags, and I want to leave and pretend I never saw any of you all get involved. You're so sorry that this happened, so we're not involved in our community. Yeah, we had every intention of being involved when we first moved here, a year ago last weekend. You want Liz to be on the city council. Run for city council. For what? This is the same organization that is totally screwing us. So, all of you people that have apologized to us, but aren't doing anything to fix it, you know where you can stick it. That's all.
Thank you, ma'am. Let me see if council has any questions for you this evening. Councilmember Russell.
I can understand your frustration. As far as the fence goes and the neighbor situation, do you feel that that fence has resolved that situation?
100 percent. We have not had any issues with the neighbor since that fence was constructed.
Okay. I appreciate that, and I, I really don't want you to give up. I can understand your frustration.
I have given up. I'm done. Like I said, I'm not here fighting for it. I'm just here to quick kiss and ass and trying to work with it. It's not working. I feel like no matter what we do, we're getting screwed. We don't have the money to sue the city, or that's exactly what we would do. So, our only option is to leave. That's where I'm at, and that's how our house is now divided.
Anything further, Councilmember Russell?
No, I'm really sorry.
Councilmember Barrantyne.
I'm glad that you guys got involved, and I know that, especially with the school issue, that people in your neighborhood are soliciting that maybe you could come and change some more things. I get that. The property that's next to you, that you were told by the police, you were told by the police to build a fence to fix the problem, is that, that's a rental property?
Yes.
How many people have lived in that property since you moved in a year ago?
They've had-
Or has it been the same?
I believe it's been six tenants in the year that we've lived here, five of them ending in eviction.
In the last year?
I think that's correct.
And it was the police advice at the beginning, or through the entire process?
Because we started calling the police and the, what is it, the whatever team to help us, and after so many calls, they said, you know, your best bet at this point is to build a fence. That's how we ended up ever coming to build the fence in the first place.
Thank you.
Thank you. Seeing no further questions from council, I'll thank you for coming and speaking this evening. Our next speaker is Kathleen Bailey, here to speak about citizen concern, and on deck is Christine McMahon. Good evening.
Kathleen Bailey, 4686 South Jason Street. Inglewood Integral's $111,675 taxpayer-funded report, just released, is problematic. Most egregious is that, per Integral, radiation dose exposure to onsite workers from the significantly high-level sludge years 2010 through 16 is reported lower than the radiation dose exposures reported in either of Inglewood's previous 2003 or 2007 radiation dose risk assessments. Inglewood's 2003 risk assessment reported the onsite worker radiation dose exposure was 2.2 millirems per year. Inglewood Integral's 2017 risk assessment, sludge report, for period 2010 through 2016, reports the radiation dose exposure for the onsite equipment worker as .010 millirem per year, and for the onsite outdoor worker as .0088 millirem per year. According to Inglewood, an integral's radiation dose exposure for onsite workers has gone down, has gone from the 2.2 millirem per year reported back in 2003, when the sludge values had been so low that the sludge had been used to make berms on the golf course, down from there to only .010 and .0088 millirem per year for sludge years 2010 through 2016, when the radionuclide concentrations were so high that Inglewood was required to dispose of the sludge at the hazardous and radioactive-approved landfill. Please see attached. I've given you everything for you to see what I, support what I've just said. Number two, for many, many months, beginning in August 2016, Inglewood very publicly declared that the ACC 2010 sludge report was permanently and irretrievably lost from Inglewood's paper files, Inglewood and CDM's electronic files, irretrievably lost from Inglewood and CDM's hard drives that were both somehow damaged, along with Brennan's December 2016 declaration that ACC does not have the report. Subsequently, through a cora claim, not only was the one ACC 2010 sludge report found, but a second, previously never-reported ACC 2010 sludge report was also revealed, and both were provided to me in April of this year. And where were they found? In the 10-year data storage at ACC, exactly where I requested Inglewood look from the very beginning of my cora requests. Yet, Inglewood has never subsequently publicly reported that the sludge reports were found, so I happily do so tonight. Finally, Councilman Gillett. At the 26, 2000, study session, June 26, you attempted to resurrect Urin Airkex's original false declaration that the sludge is no more dangerous than living in a brick home, when you spoke up with Integral's physicist.
Mrs. Bailey, if I could get you to conclude your comments, please.
Certainly. I think I have one sentence here. First, you seem to miss the fact that during your exchange, the physicist was speaking about radon gas emitted into the air from the sludge versus radon gas seeping into- versus radon gas seeping into and collecting in a closed building.
Sorry, Mrs. Bailey, I apologize. I don't think we're going to have time to get into these. Perhaps we can get some council questions to try to get some of those on the table, but I ran out of time here. Uh, Mayor Pro, I'm sorry, Councilmember Russell.
Um, would you mind reading the last two sentences for the record, please?
Yes. Sorry, I've got to find my place again.
Point of order.
First, you seem to miss...
Ma'am, I apologize. Please excuse us for a moment. Councilmember Yates has interjected. A point of order. We'll turn the floor over to him for just a moment.
Happens to be that we're to be asking questions right now, not asking them to read things back into the record. She already read it once.
You know, this is, I believe, the portion that she didn't have time for. I believe the question was, can you read the last two sentences of your, of, of the text there? And...
And I answered affirmatively.
Yes, and so I believe we're in order here. Anything else on that point of order? Thank you, Ms. Bailey.
Thank you. First, you seem to miss the fact that during your exchange, the physicist was speaking of radon gas emitted into the air from sludge versus radon gas seeping and collecting into a closed building. Not radiation emitted from houses or bricks. Second, only if your infamous bricks were actually made with Inglewood's sludge, of which you and Mr. Kek often refer to as just dirt, would you then indeed have a valid point?
Thank you. Other questions from council? Councilmember Verantin.
Where you have this asterisk in this executive summary, could you let me know what portion that's directly related to in here? I haven't had a chance to really look at this. If you'd just guide me on which one...
Well, certainly. This is the, the first page on the attachments is the executive summary...
Right.
...table from 2002 sludge assessment. And I asterisked this almost a year ago, when I was just teaching myself about all of this that was going on. The asterisk next to the table, the executive summary table one, identifies that the onsite worker estimated exposure is 2.3 millirems per year, and it identifies that the, the maximum threshold is the 25 millirems per year. Below that, it's, I simply asterisked again, historically, estimated exposures are above background exposure for Colorado front-range soils.
Okay. Thank you. So you, you specifically meant to asterisk the onsite worker portion of that, that table?
Yes. In, in my head, I mean, that was fine. I, I, that, I just didn't want to, that was just there when I made the copy.
Okay.
It should be clear.
Thank you. Seeing no questions, further questions for Mrs. Bailey. I'll thank you for coming and speaking this evening. Our next speaker is Christine McMahon, here to speak about West Adriatic Place. And on deck is our final speaker, Doug Coen. Good evening, Mrs. McMahon.
Hi, Mr. Jefferson.
Welcome.
Nice to see you all. Thank you for hearing from me. My name is Christine McMahon, and I am a licensed contractor. And I've been working with the city of Inglewood and with many nonprofits. Arthur Emerson, the surrounding neighbors, and the governor's task force for the past seven months, trying to negotiate a resolution on the dispute of developing the road and utilities infrastructure for West Adriatic Place. Mr. Emerson is donating his land to charity, but before he does so, he would like to make sure the street and utilities are resolved. I have empathy for all parties involved, because this is a difficult situation. My idea was to bring the nonprofit into our discussion to have a voice on their needs. We have had meetings with the Colorado Coalition for the Homeless, Step Denver, Habitat for Humanity, and lengthy discussions with the governor's task force. The governor's task force is working on a world-class concept that benefits special needs of the mentally disabled. This awesome group has been formulated... I just lost power. I was just asked to speak like an hour before your meeting, so I'm quickly typing. But anyway, the governor's task force is doing this great new concept. There's nothing like it in the United States. And it's been formulated by our governor here in Colorado to meet the needs of people who, who are stuck. So they are in a state hospital due to having bipolar or something, something like that. And this community would address the needs for those people. And the, it would be its own community where there would be staff helping them, and it's just, it's an awesome, an awesome thing. And anyway, so in meeting with the city of Inglewood, I mean, we, we've had countless discussions, the poor city, and, and poor Art, Mr. Emerson. So he is just really struggling with this. He has found that through his 25 years here with his land, that code enforcement has not been followed through. And so what he would like to do before he donates his land to the nonprofit, to make sure that the infrastructure is taken care of. So, so it was my idea to involve the nonprofit in our discussion. And it's been very fruitful, and we're trying to have an amicable resolution here.
McMahon, if I could get you to conclude your comments.
Yep. So anyway, so I just wanted to introduce myself and to let you know what we're doing. So, thank you.
Thank you. Stick around for a moment and see if we have any questions from city council. Councilmember Yates?
Just want to ask you, basically what you guys are putting together is assisted living for the mentally ill, correct?
Okay. Councilmember Verantin?
Where is this property again? Located, you're talking about Mr. Emerson, who's been here several times, trying to get to access to that?
Uh-huh. It's, it's West Adriatic Place, so it's at Zunai in Evans.
Okay. It is, have you already discussed with the city about doing anything that would configure the property for the most advantageous use of the site? Have you discussed any of that with them?
Oh, yes.
And when, when did you meet with them? And have you heard any answer back? Or why are you presenting to us, just to let us know an update, or?
Correct. Just to, to let you know that we're trying to come to a resolution, because there's, Art is very upset and is, is feeling that the city is not following the law. Because on his deed, it says for street purposes only. So, so he brought me in to help negotiate a more amicable solution. So, so anyway, so that's all.
Okay.
Thank you. Councilmember Russell?
Have you been able to get any information from the city about going ahead and placing a road there?
Uh, yes. So actually, the city has had their own inner meetings on this situation. And so I met with Harold about, about the different avenues that we could take. And so he gave me three options that the city had come up with. And so, yes.
Okay. Thank you for coming. Appreciate it.
You bet.
Seeing no further questions, thank you, Christine, for...
Okay. Thank you. Have a good night.
Thank you. Our final speaker of the evening is Doug Coen, here to speak about energy. Good evening, Mr. Coen.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council. Doug Coen, 3051 South Marion Street. I was going to speak about energy. Changed my mind just a second ago. As the governing body of this city, Ms. Weber can go home with a solid answer tonight. You make a, an executive declaration, it's fixed. Mr. Mayor, apart from council, do you have the executive authority to fix this thing tonight? We definitely have some kind of a problem within our community development department, and I don't even want to get into that. I challenge you all tonight, before this meeting is over, to take a vote and to say to Ms. Weber and her partner, the whole thing's over. Go and live your life. Leave the fence the way it is and keep the crazy guy across the fence. Thank you.
Thank you. Questions for Mr. Coen? I guess I have one. What type of executive authority do you think I hold on this issue?
Well, I know that you have the authority as the mayor to, to perform weddings. You have the authority to pardon people who have been convicted of crimes. So I'm guessing by extension, I'm not sure I could call this a crime, but you can...
I think it's a long ways from a crime.
I, as a citizen of Inglewood, give you the authority to fix this problem.
All right.
As, as the citizen of the year, the guy who wears the wooden crown, I give you my authority here.
Thank you, sir. I'll have to run that by the city attorney before I exercise that, but I appreciate that. Councilmember Verantin?
Was that written on the inside of the crown you got? To have the authority to, to...
To empower the mayor.
I did not look at that little paper that was inside there, except that...
So are you referring to the mayor having the opportunity that if anybody is found in violation of our ordinances, that he has the right to pardon them from that?
Well, not because of what's in the crown.
No, that's because that's what's in...
Our, our chief executive does have that authority, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm going to take a closer look at that crown later.
Further questions for Mr. Coen? Thank you, Mr. Coen, for coming and speaking this evening.
I'll talk about the energy next time.
Appreciate that. We'll look forward to that. I'd like to move us on to council response to public comment. Would anybody like to kick us off this evening? Mayor Protem Gillett?
I want to thank everybody for coming out. Ms. Weber, you as well. I actually did stop by your property and look at that. And I, I gotta admit, I was a little shocked at the retaining wall, because I always thought a retaining wall retained something. And so I know that that's one of the issues we're trying to work through. And, and I would definitely like city staff to make sure that we, as a city, have a, not only a plan for you, but a plan for us future-wise. Because if I want to make a fence, how big of a retaining wall can I build to say I grow over? And we have another neighbor down the street from me who we're working with, who decided to put a, her fence on a six-foot fence. So, and that's called a retaining wall. So I know that there's issues we're trying to work out. So staff needs clarity, council needs clarity, and I know you need clarity as well. I ask that you be patient. I wish your partner was still here so she could hear that. I know patience is a hard thing when it's involving you, but I'm asking that you, we make sure that staff gives council great advice and understanding on how to move forward with that. So that's where I'm going. I want to address Ms. Bailey. Number one, I never addressed the issue of radiation on that meeting for homes. It was the issue of radon. A lot of our homes in Inglewood have naturally occurring radon. And a lot of homes, even in my street and some of yours, have radon mitigation systems. And my question was, is it more dangerous to live in some of our homes without, you know, with, with the issue of radon than it is working at that plant? And we have, and the scientists said it's much safer to work at the plant than live in some of our homes. And that's what I was giving on that. We, we, the city paid almost $100,000 for experts to come in and give us advice on that water treatment plant. The city asked the public to help us select a company that would help give us that advice, and the public decided not to participate in that process. We went through almost six months of, of audits and trying to find something. And one of the things the executive summary in that meeting said is, not only is there now no problem, but they can find no problem in the past. There may have been a document that was missing that, thank God, eventually was found after a lot of requests and overrequests. But I'm, I'm comfortable to the, the neighbors around my community, some I've met with in the last week, who we've gone over the executive summary. And, and, you know, these are, again, the people who put out the statement...
Mayor, point of order. Point of order, please.
Sorry, Mayor Protem. If you don't mind, I'll deal with this point of order for a moment. Councilmember Verantin?
This council made a decision, and I have a lot of questions and a lot of statements I'd like to make about this report, but this council made a decision not to have any questions or make these kind of statements until we had an opportunity to go through the report, look at it, and have the experts again in 30 days. That was at the advice of the city attorney. So if this conversation continues like that, then, then I think it's going to lead to my feeling it necessary to kind of defend some other issues that are going on with it being done in this manner.
Thank you. I, you know, while I will consent or agree that that probably is the advice of the city attorney's office, and that is a kind of a consensus we agreed to prior to our previous study session when we addressed this issue. I believe individual council members have the right to speak on whatever topic they choose. However, I will caution you to be cautious of those issues, knowing that, you know, your comments may reveal some other comments that we haven't had an opportunity to discuss as a body quite yet.
All I've addressed, Mr. Mayor, is what's already in public record out to the public. So I just want to make sure that people know that, look at the report. It is on, it is online. We've made that report available. And I know that some want more questions about that, but I'm just asking that, you know, please look at that situation. Again, none of us up here are experts in that, and nor can we pretend that we are. So we rely on experts. And Mr. Coen, as always, I, I wish I lived in a newer world sometime, you know? And to have things just happen the way they seem like they so easily should, but I'm afraid if we gave him that much power, he would be crazy. I'm, I'm, I'm just kidding. But I want to thank everybody else for coming out tonight and just being part of the process. And, you know, what's going on. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, sir. Councilmember Russell?
Um, I would like everyone, or to thank everyone for coming out tonight. I greatly appreciate your input. Thank you for the insight on the Declaration of Independence, Cohen. I appreciate that. I want to start with Doug. What you did tonight was incredibly kind, and it gave me hope. And I think it also gave Ms. Weber hope. And then I felt like her hopes just got dashed, because if we turn it back over to the city, it is going to be more of the same. And so I'm hoping that we leave here tonight with a resolution to this problem, because it has gone on and on and on. And it is totally unfair and unkind. I believe that these two young women had great hopes and great plans, and they wanted to do a lot of stuff to their house, but that has all been dashed at this point. There is no trust. And this has to change. This culture has got to change. I, so I want to thank you for your bravery, Liz, and Rhonda also. Although she's not here, I greatly appreciate that. Ms. Bailey, I will choose not to comment this evening on what has been shared, but know that not every council member up here has the same opinion as the Mayor Protem. And so I appreciate your willingness to keep this before us. And Christine, I know that you've already left. Thank you for coming to share tonight. I greatly appreciate it.
Thank you. Councilmember Martinez?
Thank you, everyone, for coming tonight. I want to talk to Ms. Weber and Ms. Filetti. Thank you for coming again and expressing your frustrations. I really understand your frustrations. I am sorry that this is still continuing to go on. The safety of you and your family are of the most importance to me, and I think that's what it comes down to. For you, that's why you built the fence in the first place, was for your personal safety. And I think we all respect that. And I'm hoping that we can do everything we can tonight to come up with a resolution so you and your family can leave tonight and, and get back to normal life.
Thank you, ma'am. Councilmember Verantin?
Ms. Bailey, I greatly appreciate the information that you've brought forward. And as I stated before during that study session, until we have an opportunity to have those experts come and be able to address some of the questions, the intent that I agreed with the city attorney with was that sometimes the question... with the city attorney with was that sometimes the questions can inappropriately be inflammatory. And I neither want to create the impression that something's gone on, and I want to address if there has been something that's gone on. And I want to at least share with you that I did go back and listen. You did say that the report would be done exactly how it was done, that there are concerns and questions, I think is obvious, and we need to address them in a way that isn't making it look as if we're, anybody's jumping to the gun to either protect the city or throw them under the bus. Do our due diligence and do our job before we go speaking out of school on this. And I appreciate your additional information that you've provided councils. The property for Art Emerson, I will bring up with another one that we have on here. And the reason that I read, now that he's going to a nonprofit and trying to do something with this, is that we often consider, and the very sentence I read was that, the analysis of reconfiguring a property for the most advantageous use of the site is something we should consider for all people, not just specific developers. So I will be bringing that issue up when I pull this out of the consent agenda. But I hope that they're coming to the city and having this conversation, and that we get updated from the city on exactly what's going on with this property and how we're gonna handle this. To Ms. Weber and Rhonda, and I'm sure she was frustrated, and I'm sorry she didn't stay, I apologize. You have been more than patient. This has been going on for over a year. To have these kind of police issues going on, and for the police to throw their hands up, or at least it seems how you feel that they threw their hands up and said, here's how you resolve this, not with the same people, but with a set of different people, so many different people that have lived there and been infected in a year, that you would think that we should have some other resolutions to this through the police department. But it seems like they said, build a fence and that'll fix it. And yet they were right, and you're saying that building the fence fixed it. And the height of the fence seems to be very important in this issue, and we have a process problem. This has been going on for over a year. This is the third or fourth time you have addressed council. We have already gotten staff involved. We obviously have a process problem, and I believe Mr. Cohen is correct. It's become very apparent there is a process problem, and that there has been some admitting that there was inaccurate information given. Your finances were put to that inaccurate information, that there's some financial agreement that we're, are willing to do some financial piece of fixing this. And it has gone on long enough. One, I hope our police are more, can be more proactive in trying to fix issues without building fences. But if that is the only way that we can resolve this, it has gone on long enough. And we need to find a solution to this and figure it out and not have you come again, at least on this issue. I know when you came last time, you said you wanted to do other building permits, and I feel your frustration that this is not a process that is endearing itself to people coming into our community and revitalizing our housing stock and remodeling if they're gonna have these kind of problems going forward. And once we address a problem, and no system is perfect, but once we address a problem, we should know how to get there from here. And we seem to be pretty stuck here, and it's very frustrating. So I hope we come to a resolution quickly, and maybe Doug will bring his crown and we'll figure out we got more power than we do. But I have a feeling Mr. Cohen is right, and this body has the power to make this happen without you having to come again. Hope we figure that out. Thank you.
Thank you. Hopefully, we can get to the bottom of that tonight, as you have just a few questions or a few comments here. Coen, thank you so much for coming and try to remember and share one of the reasons for the holiday, the Declaration of Independence on July 4th. So thank you for that reminder. Ms. Weber and Ms. Faletti, thank you for coming tonight. You know, I do want you to know that, you know, after your last appearance here at the city council, you know, I personally discussed this issue with staff, and it seemed to be progressing in the right manner. So I'm really sorry to see you two folks back here tonight. You know, just to try to maybe get to some of the heart of some of these issues, maybe I've got some questions for the city attorney's office. If she's able to answer these off the cuff, that'd be great. If not, we can turn them into a council request. The first is the question of, can this body grant a variance for these folks?
The way your law is currently written is that fences in residential areas will be six feet. If there is an extreme set of circumstances, the city code provides the variance process. The variance process is built in so that there can be a review of a specific set of circumstances to determine if the code should be waived in a certain, in a certain situation. That's what staff has to work with is the law as you've passed it. So at this point, what we've heard is that the residential fence height is six feet, and the homeowners in that area, in this area, everyone has incredible compassion. Everyone has compassion for the situation. So at this point, what staff knows is that the way the code is currently written, which staff is only permitted to enforce, which is the code as it's written, says six feet. The waiver process we have is variance.
The variance process is dictated by the Board of Adjustment and Appeals. Is that correct?
Correct. So that's all your code provides for. The only authority you have at this point is to direct staff to ignore the law. And when, when your ordinance says something, we're all bound by that until we change the ordinance. But the ordinance has a very effective method for waiver, and that is the variance process. And it seems that this is the exact case for which you built the variance process into place for.
Thank you. Councilmember Berentone, is your issue specific to the question and answer? I'll allow a question here if you've got one.
Did the community development director have the authority then to address originally that they go ahead and then put flower boxes or dirt up along that retaining portion of the wall, which we do have regulations for the size of the retaining wall, to resolve that? Did he have the authority to tell them that if they put dirt on there or the flower boxes up on there, that then it would meet the retaining wall requirement?
No member of staff had the authority to give them options. No member of staff should have given them options. Staff should have said, it's a six-foot fence. The only way to change a six-foot fence is to go through the variance process. If any member of staff tried to give them options, they were operating outside the code.
And do we have a handle on, because I believe that this is not a one-time issue. Have we addressed, then, making sure that the staff is aware what the scope of their authority is?
Thank you for asking that. Yes, we are addressing it actually as we speak. I will say that this issue has made me do a deep dive into all of those processes, and I'm finding all kinds of things that need to be addressed. And so I actually was planning on giving you all a summary of kind of what we're going to be addressing, how we're gonna be looking at these processes, not only looking at the processes, but when something happens, how these type of issues will be addressed so they'll never happen again. I did want to give you a conclusion to that, so that's why I haven't written that report, or conclusion to this issue. That's why I haven't finished that report yet. But I am planning on getting that to you, hopefully, before the end of the week.
For the city attorney, I mean, I can understand that if this, if somebody comes to our employees and they're given that information, they believe it's written on the tablets. They believe God just said, you can do this, because they believe that they've talked to somebody who has the authority. So is there other redress for that? So if an employee violates their authority, then a citizen who relies on that information has no redress?
Staff has no authority to go against the code as it's written. If staff misunderstands the code, that doesn't make it the law. The law is what the governing body has passed. That binds staff. And if it was any other way, then any, then any member of staff could, could say whatever they wanted to and work around the code. So that's one of the things, and you guys have heard me chant this before, and I know it's driving everyone crazy, but one of the things as a city we all have to remember is that the law is the code as you have passed it, and until you change it, we all are bound by it. If there, if someone tried to grant, to give them options because they felt compassion for the situation, I have incredible sympathy for that. But we're, we don't have that authority. You said a six-foot fence, that's all they're allowed unless there's a variance. Staff has to abide by that.
Is the option legal? I mean, if they just thought of it on their own and put a bunch of dirt up there, is the option, without staff giving it to them, is the option a legal option? And would that make them in compliance?
I don't read that, the way I read the retaining wall definition, that's not how I read it. However, I'd hate to bind the city based on my memory of having read the retaining wall option three weeks ago. So a retaining wall is supposed to be built to prevent dirt from basically sliding down a hill, as I'm reading the retaining wall option. So just throwing dirt on the ground to be sit beside the fence doesn't seem to be within that requirement, that I am not the building code individual enforcement officer.
You're very welcome. Thank you. And final question, perhaps, for the city attorney's office is, do I have any unilateral authority on this issue?
Believe, I do not believe you have unilateral, unilateral authority, but if you choose to amend the charter, you could. And I did reread the charter to see if it gave you special authority. Within, there is, actually, if someone is convicted of a crime in municipal court and you want to basically set aside their fine or set aside their penalty, I think you have those kind of municipal court authority, although that's a whole different, that's a whole different circumstance than what we're dealing with now.
Like a code of-
Sorry, hold on. Do we have, do I have any unilateral authority that you're aware of on this issue?
You do not.
Thank you. You know, Ms. Weber and Ms. Faletti, I think the best we can do right now is ask for your cooperation through the variance process. And just to let you know, I will support a city-funded solution if, if for some reason that is denied to you. You know, perhaps that's something you can, you know, give you some solace or sleep at night. I know this is drug on way longer than you would like it to. Needless to say, I'll be trying to find a solution for you. Kathleen, thank you for your comments regarding integral's report. It is nice to get a different perspective on these things as the body evaluates them. So appreciate you taking the time to submit your comments. Christine McMahon, thank you for being here with Art Emerson. I know they've left already, but I did want to try to give just a real brief overview to the city council. Recall, this is a development issue regarding West Adriatic Place, the missing link west of Zuni. Recall that this is mostly an access issue, that Art Emerson's piece is in the middle of where the undeveloped road is, and there's missing right-of-way dedications for that road, as well as not everybody on the block, or not a majority of folks, or the necessary amount of folks on the block willing to fund a new construction of a road and paid for by the adjacent properties. You know, I'd heard that he is looking to potentially donate the land after this right-of-way issue, but that has been kind of, my understanding has been the case for some time now, that we're looking for this third party to perhaps deal with. I did want to advise the council that we received, I believe, some communication from either the city manager or city attorney's office regarding a takings claim initiated by Mr. Emerson. You know, recall that I told the council that I would be working to try to mediate with Mr. Emerson and the staff. You know, unfortunately, haven't been successful in that, and now with the takings claim taking forward, moving forward, I will be taking a step back and not be working directly with Mr. Emerson on this issue. And any other questions or anything, feel free to touch base with me. I can fill in some information on this as well. Mr. Cohen, thank you for coming and speaking tonight and for being willing to change your topic to help out a fellow citizen. I too find that heartwarming, so thank you again. Councilmember Gates?
For Ms. Faletti and Weber, my deepest feelings for you, I mean, to have your household in turmoil like that. I will do whatever I can do within the law to help you. With that said, I do have another question to ask staff over here. Are we under any kind of time constraint to resolve this fence issue?
So I would like to resolve it as soon as possible. What I, what I was doing was waiting for Ms. Weber. I don't want to, I was ready to pounce on the variance right away. I don't want to repeat that again, though. I wanted Ms. Weber to sign, me to sign the same document saying that's how she wants to move forward, so then staff can jump on getting her the information we need for the variance, helping her fill out those, those forms, as well as, I actually even told Ms. Weber in, in writing that I'm willing to go myself and testify on her behalf of what the elements of this case are. And so, just like Ms. McKinney Brown stated, my hands, our hands are kind of tied. Yes, mistakes were made, but there's, there's, there's only a certain level of authority we have to fix it. And so, to, to where we want to go. If I could say, right now, let's build a retaining wall, if I had that authority, I would say, well, let's go ahead and build it. I don't have that authority. And, and so, therefore, we just have to know when Ms. Weber wants to start the variance process, and then we, we'll go there.
The reason I ask this is, it sounds like her neighbor, or I should say, that particular household goes through quite a few residents in a very short time period. And I don't want to come forward and say, no, you have to cut this fence down. I would like to thoroughly exhaust all possibilities before we ever get there. And potentially, the biggest threat there could just up and move. But I would still like to find some way, because it sounds like the household has a lot of turnover, and the landlord is not very choosy about who he allows in there. So I mean, it is a part of her own safety situation, their safety. It doesn't seem like there has been any substantial criminal activity that could change what's going on next door, but they are threatened. So I would like to make sure staff takes due diligence, take their time, make sure it happens. We exhaust every possible avenue before we ever have to get to a, a decision that wouldn't be good for them. And the variance there, I mean, with you testifying, I think that would be a, a good support in that. I don't know if it's appropriate for, for me to testify, but I would be more than, oh, okay, I'm hitting a no out of that. But I would like to see them be able to keep their fence for their own certain, you know, own mental safety and serenity. They should be allowed to live their, live in their house and enjoy where they live. So.
Thank you, sir. Seeing no further response to public comment, I'm gonna move us on to agenda item eight. This is communications, proclamations, and appointments. I would entertain a motion on eight A through eight A G at this time.
Make a motion.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Discussion on this item?
Mayor, we'd like to pull eight K for further discussion.
Eight K, okay. Is there a second? It sounds like, I don't think this is like consent where you can just pull it off. I think this is gonna require a second and a motion, correct? City attorney to pull one of these items off the eight agenda here? Or at least remove it from this motion? I believe so. Hearing no, nothing. Yeah, I think so. So let's do a second. Is there a second on that motion to pull K? Second. Thank you. So now, any discussion on the amendment to pull eight K? Councilmember Berentone?
This is, so we're just pulling Coen Dickerson from code enforcement to pull her out of the list.
Of the approval, and she'll be handled separately if this motion is successful.
Oh, for goodness sake, okay. I under, fine.
Thank you. Further questions or discussion on the motion? This is a motion to remove eight K for a separate action and discussion. Seeing no further comments, please vote. Seeing no further comments, please vote.
All votes have been cast. Let the record show four ayes and two nays, the two nays being Councilmember Russell and Barantone.
Going to bring us back to the underlying motion. This is eight, all the eights besides K are remaining in this motion, so we'd be voting as amended. Any comments on the remainder of the items here? Seeing none, please vote.
All votes have been cast. Record shows six ayes.
Okay, we're going to bring this back to eight K. This is a resolution appointing Coeene A. Dickerson as a member of the, member to the Code Enforcement Advisory Committee for the City of Inglewood. Do I hear a motion?
I make a motion that we appoint Coeene Dickerson to the Code Enforcement Advisory Committee.
Thank you, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Discussion on this item?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, the reason I pulled that out, I have a question for Ms. Dickerson. I, I supported having you on this board, and I just had a couple of questions, and asked the mayor if there's a way we can even have you come up and just answer those questions briefly with that.
You know, a little irregular, you would generally think to allow it. Is there objection to that from?
Yeah, I do have, I have an objection to that.
Councilmember Barantone?
We, we have a process where we interview people, and then we have discussion, and to call somebody up because they happen to be in the audience during this process, I think is, is absolutely ridiculous. This person was called out before and was not voted on by this body last time. There was ample time to go ahead and have discussion about this, and ask her questions during the interview process. So, I don't, I don't think that this is appropriate to put her on the spot tonight when she wasn't expecting to do this. I don't think that's an appropriate process.
You know, I, I do think it is irregular. I do think that Mrs. Dickerson is in the audience. I would leave, I would defer to her if she was willing to, to answer some questions. I, you know, would generally only support this if, you know, this were not an attempt to, you know, make anybody look mad. I assume that the intent of asking these questions would be to try to gain support to support her for this position.
That is, that is the reason for this.
Mrs. Dickerson, I'll defer to you. Would you like to come forward to the podium to answer Mayor Protem's questions, or not? Yes, ma'am, after you hear the questions, I, I will honor that right. I think, as she stated, if she hears the question and doesn't like it, she may walk away, and I think that's a reasonable position. So, Mayor Protem, I'll turn it over to you.
Ms. Coeene, Coeene, thank you for coming up, and I apologize for this. It's uncomfortable for me, too. The, the question is, when we were interviewing you, you had told us that the only boards and commissions you were interested in were the ones that you applied for, and you said you weren't interested in any of the others, yet you were put on this board, and I, I hadn't heard from you, number one, of whether or not you wanted to serve on this committee.
I'm very happy to serve on that committee, sir.
Thank you. The second question I had is, due to being in contact with some members of that board, there was concern that they thought you might have ulterior motives to come on and, and cause issues, and I, I don't think that that might be the issue, but I would just like to know from you, because we didn't get, we didn't get to ask this question in the interview, is that what, what would be your goal for serving on, on the board?
As a citizen, I'm interested in that.
Okay, so you, you don't have any, you're not there to fight with the chair or anything like that?
Oh, no, I've fought with him before, but that's beside the point. I have opinions, and many citizens did, and I voiced my opinion just like a whole bunch of citizens did.
And the only reason, again, just to inform why I pulled this aside, is I was asked to make sure, number one, that you did want to serve, and number two, that, you know, that we just had clarity, which I can support.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Thank you so much for coming up.
Councilmember Barantone, did you also have questions for Coeene Dickerson?
Coeene, I apologize. I am concerned about this process. I did not know that at any time after the council made its decision, that we went back and approved our appointments prior to voting on them with the individual boards, or that we have ever done that process before. And I apologize for this.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Dickerson.
I also think it was very irregular.
I appreciate your willingness to step forward. Thank you. So now, we do have a motion and a second on eight K. Is there any discussion on this item? I will be supporting eight K. You know, I do think that Mrs. Dickerson is a very opinionated person. I think this is a great outlet in code enforcement, an area that she has spoken on several times to be constructive on this issue. Any further comments? Seeing none, please vote.
All votes have been cast. The record shows six ayes.
Thank you. Let's move us on to agenda item nine. This is the consent agenda items. At this point, I would entertain a motion on nine A one, nine B one through ten, and C one.
Move.
Thank you, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Further discussion on the consent agenda items? Councilmember Barantone?
I'll be pulling B nine, B eight.
B eight.
Or thirteen, sorry.
I'm sorry, B eight and nine, is that correct?
Very last one on there.
No, it's eight.
Oh, it's eight. Eight, sorry.
So, you're pulling B eight?
The Inglewood Senior Living Center at 355 South Clarkson.
Yes, ma'am, and what was the other one?
That was the only one.
Just the one? Thank you. Councilmember Russell?
I would like to pull nine C one.
C one, thank you. Items B eight, nine B eight, as well as C one. Nine B eight is Council Bill forty-one, and nine C one is the Northwest Green Belt Trail Connection have been pulled from the consent agenda items. That leaves the remainder of the consent agenda items being moved and seconded. Any further discussion on the consent agenda as it remains? Seeing none, please vote on the remainder of the consent agenda.
All votes have been cast. The record shows six ayes.
Okay, I'd like to move us to nine B eight. This is the Inglewood Senior Living Center at 3555 South Clarkson Street. This is a vacation of easement and dedication of easement. This is Council Bill number forty-one. The utilities staff recommends council adopt an ordinance for the vacation of easement and dedication of sanitary sewer easement requested by KRF nine six five LLC for construction for the Inglewood Senior Living Center. Our staff sources Utilities Director Tom Brennan. Good evening, Director Brennan.
Good evening.
Given this is a consent agenda item, we'll skip the presentation and just move forward with council questions. Does council have any questions for staff at this point? Councilmember Barantone?
I have the same question, I believe, that I did before, when they originally did this easement on the property for, and it seems like they're moving it from the Rite Aid one over, and whether that in any way affected the amount of property that they needed in order to build the Rite Aid property, or whether this twenty-foot affects either property in giving them what they can rightfully build on there.
This easement is all on thirty-five fifty-five South Clarkson's property.
Uh huh.
It's not on Rite Aid's property.
Wasn't it, it wasn't before on there?
Rite Aid did own all of it at one time, they've celled it off.
Okay. And then, the, the analysis in here is that this is required in order, that it will require reconfiguring the property for the most advantageous use of the site, and we're not always, it's not our responsibility to reconfigure a property so that the developer can have the most advantageous piece of the site. I'm glad that we're working on it, but it isn't our responsibility. The issue that I want to bring up is that the senior living that they wanted to do on here, that this does give the, whether this gives the council the opportunity to withhold or make any other requirements on this property, like not making it tax exempt in order for us to do this easement? Whether we can put other conditions on this easement, like not making the property tax exempt?
I don't know, I can't answer that.
Then I guess I'll ask the attorney. Is it possible, in order to do the, something like this easement, that we could make a requirement that in doing these easements, and that we could put additional requirements on there, that they would not go ahead and seek a tax exemption like from the Inglewood Housing Authority, as so many other properties have?
That's a complex question, and I don't think I can answer it with, without looking into some various issues about land use laws and restrictions on land use. I don't say it's impossible, I, I just would need some time to look at that.
Okay. And that, that issue for this particular property came up, just to clarify it, on the, on the council request that I had, that we had no authority over it, and then I went and checked it out more, and maybe that needs to be answered by more than our community development department, it needs to be answered by you as our city attorney, that we do have authority over a project and a property, maybe in some other ways, that could prevent that from happening, so that we don't have, get blindsided again, and I wanted to make sure that this easement, we weren't missing an opportunity to make sure that we had some control over that issue. Okay? And for that reason, I don't want to miss any opportunity in dealing with them that would give us the opportunity to prevent them from making this a tax-exempt property through our Inglewood Housing Authority. I know that the mayor's looking at some other issues with that, too, but for this particular one, that's the question that I had for you, so thank you for that.
Thank you. Seeing no further questions, I'll entertain a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Further comments or questions, Councilmember Russell?
Actually, I, I would like to move that we table this until the city attorney has an opportunity to look at that.
Thank you, there's a motion to table in a second. We'll now move on to discussion regarding the motion to table. Is there a date certain on the motion, or do you want to leave it open?
How soon could you?
Yeah, as, as we've discussed before, if we leave it uncertain, it'll come before the next meeting.
Yes.
Did you want to put a date certain on it, or do you want to just kind of let it come to the next meeting?
So, how much time do you need to research this?
If you set it to come back for the next meeting, I, I'll just move this to the top of the list.
That's fine.
Thank you. We got a motion and a second to table this to our next meeting. Comments on this? Councilmember Martinez?
This is a question for Mr. Brennan. How time-sensitive is this approval?
As far as the City of Inglewood, there is no time. It's not a time-sensitive issue.
Okay.
Councilmember Barantone?
Again, I'll just restate that because of a council member request that I put on and brought up at the last council meeting, having some authority on limiting the housing authority from making properties tax exempt without our permission and without our knowledge, without even bringing the issue to us, which the mayor is working on, I, I am concerned that if we have any leverage with this property, that we would be able to make sure that we had, had that in there, because if this is necessary to make the, the property the most advantageous use of the site, then it might be a leverage that we could have, so that we stop the bleeding and making all of these tax-exempt properties through this other entity. So, I'll just be voting against it, but I would rather table it and have that information, and if that's, there's some other information she brings forward, then we'd be more informed on what we were doing.
Director Brennan, I have a question. Will this delay the construction of the project?
I do not know. Utilities, this particular sewer is already in place.
Thank you. Other staff, Manager CAC, do you think any impact on the development here?
Yeah, I'm not aware of what their construction schedule is either. I, I saw our chief building official here earlier, I could ask her if the plans have been in and approved, but beyond that, I'm, I'm not certain as to where this project sits. There has not been any movement out on that, on that particular site right now to do any construction activity at this point.
There has not been?
Other than site work.
Which is an indicator, though, that it may not delay the project. Councilmember Barantone?
Well, it is a six-story building, and more than likely, we'll have to go through some other zoning issue to come forward, and I would like them to know ahead of time that the intent, if, if we intend not to allow tax-exempt status on this property, that they're aware of that ahead of time in what they're pursuing to do. I think that would only be fair.
We can certainly make contact with that developer and let them know that's the case.
Or that, at least it's an issue. I don't know how the rest of council feels about it, but I want to make sure that this council has the authority to do something about it, instead of having the assessor come and tell us after the fact.
Thank you.
But we need to know from the city attorney, so I'm for tabling it still.
Other comments on the motion and second to table? I'm considering supporting here, hearing that we don't anticipate an impact on the Any other comments? Seeing none, please vote on the tabling question. Get all the votes in?
Record shows six ayes.
Thank you. I'd like to move us on to nine C one. This is the Northwest Green Belt Trail Connection. Staff recommends the council approve by motion a contract for the construction of the Northwest Green Belt Trail Connection to the lowest bidder, which is Concrete Express Incorporated. Our staff sources our open space manager, Dave Lee. Good evening, Manager Lee.
Good evening.
As this was a consent agenda item, we will skip staff presentation and move forward with council questions. Councilmember Russell?
One of the questions that I have is, there are no drawings in here about where this is going to be? I mean, it gives somewhat of a description.
You are correct, there is no drawings in here. We do have those.
Okay, can you tell me where?
This is going, we currently have a, a trail spur from the Platte River, which is approximately across from the service center on the west side, that goes up through by what used to be Robinson Brick, that's in the city and county of Denver, that's concrete. When it approaches the Inglewood boundary, it goes to asphalt, and then it goes through Northwest Green Belt until it hits Zuni, and then on the other side of there, it is concrete again in the city and county of Denver. So, it's basically going through three sections of Northwest Green Belt.
And are we turning that into concrete also?
Yes, we are.
Okay. All right. Thank you, I appreciate that.
You're very welcome.
Thank you. Other questions for Manager Lee? Seeing none, I entertain a motion on nine C one.
Move.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Further discussion on this item? Mayor Protem?
Mr. Lee, thank you so much for bringing this forward. I am actually one who's actually written on that section. It is not very pleasant at this present moment.
That's why we're bringing it up to standards.
Yeah, it's, nice thing is, it's somewhat downhill, but it depends on which way you're going. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Barantone?
Thank you for providing the additional information, even without the drawing in here. It shows the depth and knowledge that you have of what you present to us, that you're able to at least answer the question without the drawing in there, and I, and I appreciate that. Thank you very much.
My apologies for leaving the drawing out.
Well, it's not like you to do those things, but you had it in your head, and you made it enough so that we could understand it. I appreciate that, thank you.
Certainly. Thank you.
Entertain a motion on nine C one? Do we do a motion?
Do we have it?
Thank you. Further discussion on nine C one? Seeing none, please vote.
All votes have been cast. Record shows seven ayes.
Thank you, Manager Lee. Move us on to agenda item ten. This is our public hearing items, nothing this evening, so I'll move us on to agenda item eleven. This is ordinance resolutions and motions. Under eleven A, approval of ordinances on first reading, we have an eleven A one, an amendment to an agreement with Urban Drainage and Flood Control, number eleven dash oh seven point two five F. This is Council Bill forty-four. Staff recommend city council adopt a bill for an ordinance to approve an intergovernmental agreement amending the previous agreement, Council Bill fifty, ordinance one, series twenty sixteen, twenty seventeen, which amended funding for the River Run Trailhead in order to complete the west side parking lot. This is the final portion of the River Run Trailhead project. Our staff sources again is open space manager, Dave Lee. Back to you, Manager Lee.
Okay, again, mayor and, and council, we're recommending that you adopt this bill for an ordinance. We've had previous council action on it, Council Bill number fifty. We've had previous council action on it, Council Bill Number 50, Council Bill Number 5. In summary, urban drainage and flood control intends to construct a 58-space parking lot. This is on the west side of the Platte River, adjacent to the Inglewood Broken T Golf Course. Due to the popularity of the new Trailhead and the river amenities, we've seen that it's necessary to increase our parking spaces over there, and hence, that's why this is coming forward. This was also a large part of the South Platte Working Group, and this has been in the plans for quite some time. This agreement formalizes funding for the increased parking lot on the west side. The financial impacts to this are $70,000 to construct the parking lot in itself, drainage and some lighting for that area. The City of Inglewood has previously contributed 15.09% of the entire urban drainage project, which is $1.675 million. Beyond this, and once this parking lot is completed, we have completed 100% of our obligation. And if there are any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Thank you. Questions for Director Lee? I'm sorry, Manager Lee. Councilmember Russell?
So, where is the $70,000 coming from? Was it in the budget?
Yes. It is in the budget under the Conservation Trust Fund, which are lottery dollars.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions? Councilmember Martinez?
I just want to say, I'm so happy that the River Run Trailhead is such a huge hit that we have so many people wanting to go there, and I think this parking, this additional parking lot is really important, so thanks for bringing it to us.
I agree, it is too. Actually, the Travel Channel did a filming down there last week.
Wow.
And it's going to be featured on one of their series next year.
Very cool. Thank you.
Entertain a motion on 11A1?
Moved.
Second.
Thank you. Further discussion? Did want to note that last week I was giving a tour to some of our colleagues from Denver, and we hit the River Run project. Maybe we're in the video, I don't know, but it was middle of the day, and there was, you know, at least 10 folks sort of lined up to take advantage of the surfing amenity and boarding amenity there, so congrats on that, and hopefully we get some more outreach to make sure to get as much utility as possible. I know the council is perhaps at one point thinking about a joint event there, perhaps with Sheridan, so that's something perhaps that could help with that. Any further comments on Council Bill 44? Seeing none, please vote.
All votes have been cast. Record show six eyes.
Thank you. Moving us on to 11A2. This is Bellevue Park Improvements Grant Acceptance. This is Council Bill Number 46. Staff recommends that council approve a bill for an ordinance authorizing an intergovernmental agreement with Arapahoe County regarding acceptance of grant funding for Bellevue Park improvements. Our staff source once again, busy night for open space manager, Dave Lee. Manager Lee?
Thank you. Again, staff's recommending the council approve a bill for an ordinance for this grant. Previously, council had approved Resolution Number 8, series of 2017, supporting our grant application for Bellevue Park improvements. Arapahoe County had notified us in May, I believe it was on the 15th, that we were successful with this grant. The grant funding will allow for construction of a shelter, trails, picnic tables, grills, a vault toilet for the area, and a small 15-space parking lot. The existing shelter that was there had to be removed due to some safety concerns with some rotting timbers that had been there for many, many years, and hence, we had chosen to apply for a grant for this. The Arapahoe County Open Space Grant is in the amount of $250,000, and it requires a cash match from the City of Inglewood in the amount of $83,900. The cash match is budgeted for in the 2017 Open Space Fund.
Thank you. Questions for Manager Lee? Did we receive funding from the same source for Cushing already?
Cushing?
Park?
No, I don't believe so.
For the, I'm sorry, what do you call it, pavilion there, or the?
Not in Cushing Park. Rotolo is another one that's coming up.
Yeah, I saw that. Is it that our need, isn't it great at Cushing, or is it that we have other funding mechanisms in place?
This was put in place before the 2016 Master Plan was completed, which identified a number of priority projects, one of them being Cushing Park, and that's where our emphasis will be in the future in applying for grants.
Perhaps with this body next year for Cushing?
Yes.
Thank you.
We definitely will.
Thank you. Councilmember Russell?
I noticed that on both this and I think the next one too, that the letter of acceptance is dated May 16, 2017, and then on your chart where, and we have 60 days to begin work, so this will actually begin because the next council meeting, like on day 61, but are we ready to go on this?
We're not ready to go on this. We've just been awarded a grant, and that 60 days is to get council approval, so it's not to begin the project. We'll have to bid this out.
Okay. Well, I thought there were, actually, didn't we already have this bid out?
Not for Bellevue Park. These were grant awards.
Right, okay.
You, Councilmember Barrantam?
Well, I guess my question's for Councilmember Russell. So is she correct that we won't have, the council won't have approved it until 61 days? Is that a?
That is correct, and I've already talked to Arapahoe County about it. We've started the process here tonight within the 60-day time frame.
Oh, so they're counting?
So they're very fine with it.
Doesn't?
Yes.
Necessarily.
But it will get approved on a second reading.
All right, thank you.
Questions for Manager Lee? Councilmember Barrantam?
I appreciate the financial piece that you put in there. It just was a slight bit confusing. I know you're trying to let us know how much money is going to be done after this. I think that that's, it's a good way to do it, that the end result, that it's included in the balance of that million-three piece, and what will be left after, and it's just a part of that. It just was a little bit confusing at first to see.
I understand.
That's more than $13,000 of the matching part, so I know you're attempting to try and make sure that you're as transparent as possible with the fund itself.
Correct.
And how much is left, and so as we keep playing with that, but after I went back, we'll tweak it and we'll see how that works, but I do appreciate you putting that piece in.
Certainly, thank you.
You see no further questions? I entertain a motion on Council Bill 46?
Moved.
Second.
Thank you. Further discussion on this item? So glad to see some of our parks improved, and we'll be looking forward to the Cushing application moving forward.
We certainly will too.
Further discussion? Seeing none, please vote.
All votes have been cast. The record show six eyes.
I'd like to move us on to 11A3. This is the Rotolo Park Shelter Grant Acceptance. This is Council Bill 47. The Parks Recreation and Library Department recommends council approve a bill for an ordinance authorizing an intergovernmental agreement between the City of Inglewood and Arapahoe County for the Arapahoe County Open Space Grant Award in the amount of $50,000 for Rotolo Park Shelter. Our staff source again is open space manager, Dave Lee.
Thank you. Staff is recommending that council approve a bill for an ordinance for this grant as well, Rotolo Park Shelter. Council previously approved Resolution Number 39, series of 2016, supporting the city's grant application to Arapahoe County Open Space for Rotolo Park Playground, which was recently completed this spring, and Resolution Number 7, series of 2017, supporting the city's grant application to Arapahoe County Open Space for Rotolo Park Shelter. Picnic Shelter will allow parents and anybody out there, grandparents, to watch their children on the newly constructed playground in the comfort of some shade, and also provide some shelter during inclement weather. Families will be able to use the shelter to picnic and play at Rotolo Park. In other words, I think it's a great amenity in addition to that park and to that playground. Arapahoe County awarded the City of Inglewood a grant of $50,000, which requires a cash match of $13,200 out of the city's shareback funds, which are budgeted for in the 2017 Open Space Fund. If there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Questions for Manager Lee? Councilmember Russell?
One thing that I just want to make sure that we do, because it says in these grant applications about maintaining, we will maintain them, and one thing that I think I finally realized is the Arapahoe County shareback funds, that is a source of income for us, and it's designated for parks and rec. Is that correct?
That it's designated for parks.
Okay, so in our maintenance plan, do we, is that where the money would come from? Would be the Arapahoe County shareback funds, or?
Right now, we take, I think, up to $115,000, which we can earmark for maintenance, but as we retire some of these old playgrounds, you remember that there was a playground there, as we retire those, there should be less maintenance for a good number of years to come. Our director has also committed to Arapahoe County via a letter of intent in the grant application that we will maintain these facilities.
Right, and there will be money set aside, I think I read in here, especially for vandalism and graffiti.
Correct.
And things like that. But I kind of feel like maybe some of our parks have been run down because we've quit maintaining them until they get to the point where we need to replace them.
Well, I hope that's not the case.
Okay.
We do our very best to try to maintain all of them.
Okay, I appreciate that. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Further questions on Council Bill 47? Seeing none, entertain a motion?
Moved.
Second.
Thank you. Further discussion on Council Bill 47? I'm really excited to see this come to fruition. I know the neighbors have been really excited about the new playground there, so utility of this park is really going through the roof. Congrats on getting this grant and adding another amenity to our parks plan. I will say that to Councilmember Russell's point, as we add amenities, I think we do need to be conscious of the ongoing maintenance costs. You know, however, I think this is a pretty good deal to pass up, so I will be supporting this. Further comments on Council Bill 47? Seeing none, please vote.
All votes have been cast. The record show six eyes.
Thank you. Moving us?
Thank you, mayor and council.
Have a good night. 11B1, this is the Building Use Tax Ordinance Amendment. This is Council Bill 48. Staff recommends that the council adopt an ordinance that amends Title 4, Chapter 4 in the Inglewood Municipal Code 2000 pertaining to the imposition of use tax all within the City of Inglewood, Arapahoe County, Colorado. Our staff sources city manager, Eric Keck. Manager Keck, welcome.
Thank you, mayor. I just stand for any questions, given that this is a second reading, to understand if there's anything new that's kind of surfaced since the first reading.
Thank you. You know, we did have substantial discussion. Any questions for Manager Keck? Seeing none, entertain a motion on Council Bill 48?
Moved.
Thank you.
Second.
First and a second on Council Bill 48. I'm going to move it on to discussion. Councilmember Barrantam?
First, the ordinance does not pertain to the school district because they pull their permits from the state. They didn't pull their permits from the state. In order to avoid this, they pull their permits from the state, so the vehicle for us to go ahead and even charge this or have this apply to them doesn't exist. However, then this does specifically bring out the school district for certain requirements that aren't required of any other developer. The school district has only done two of their six schools so far, and this is still a vehicle to try to charge them tax and put them under requirements that no other developer is required to do, so it actually made it worse for them, and the fact that it would require them to pay tax, since they are a tax exempt entity, on anything that wasn't a bond issue, and since that's specifically listed out, I think that's ridiculous. They're tax exempt, and we should respect their tax exempt status, so I'll be voting no again.
Thank you. Councilmember Russell?
I just would like to echo that. They are a tax exempt organization, and I want to honor that, and so I will not be supporting this.
Thank you. Further discussion on Council Bill 48? Councilmember Martinez?
I just have a question for Councilmember Barrantam and Councilmember Russell. Ideally, how would you like to see this resolved? Or this ordinance changed, or?
I think to come under the understanding that this ordinance does not pertain to the school because they're, pull their permits from the state, and that's why previously in 2011, they had to do it by contract, and they were trying to do a contract with them this time, so the ordinance doesn't apply to them because they pull their permits from the state, and they are a tax exempt entity, and the reason they're a tax exempt entity is because they're their own government entity, similar to the city, and with their own elected officials, they have their own ballot issue, they had their own voters, and the money was going to them, and for us to circumvent their tax exempt status to try to eke any money out of that, I think is inappropriate. So admitting that they're tax exempt and honoring that, and so it would have been the agreement that we made before, just that we don't try to do side contracts with the school, and that they're tax exempt and that we honor that, would have resolved that.
You would prefer that we don't even touch this amendment, we just?
Unfortunately, the other thing that this does is it specifically calls out the school to do public improvements that no other developer or contractor is even required to do, so I'm very concerned that this is kind of a patchwork fix to try and do something that only ends up in us trying to meddle in their project and put our hands in their cookie jar, and it's not our money.
Point of clarification, mayor. The statement that we would be requiring the schools to do public improvements that were required by no other developers is inaccurate. These public improvements were identified during the development review team process for this project, much like any development review team process, so much of what Councilmember Barrantam said is accurate, but for that piece, that this would be an onerous requirement, these requirements were identified and the school agreed to do those.
Could I get one clarification then? Because I did specifically ask that when we made the, when we were trying to do the motion to just not charge the school, and I said, there's already a vehicle to do public improvements with the school, and I believe at that time you said, no, there are not, but if there are already a vehicle through the process to do public improvements, then I am very concerned that we are specifically calling them out here. If we already have a vehicle to do that, then we don't need it here.
Councilmember, we did discuss this at the last meeting. There really are two particular paths that the school district must take. Anytime that anybody wants to do development in the city, whether or not you're going to pull permits directly for construction, there are right-of-way permits that need to be pulled as well, for them to be able to work on a right-of-way. At that point in time, this is where the contractor and their team came in to discuss public improvements and how the public infrastructure around the school sites was going to be interrupted or need to be amended in order to accommodate the school. At that point in time, that's where these products were identified. I don't believe it's our intent, as you've enunciated, to try to tax them for these public improvements. We just want to be sure that they can do that. I think one of the ordinances that was put forward, or a particular pathway, was to say, schools, you don't even need to come to the city, you're completely independent, and I think we wanted to avoid that and ensure that anytime there's any public improvement, whether it's the school district or any other taxing entity, because we discussed looking more broadly with respect to this particular matter, and looking beyond schools and talking about other governmental entities as well, was to ensure that the City of Inglewood and its taxpayers weren't left holding the bag for public improvements, or in other words, taxing the city's general fund for projects wherein, which a project improvement would require these types of improvements. So hopefully, maybe that clarifies that particular situation.
I appreciate the clarification, because what you said was that you already have a vehicle to make sure that they do public improvements, and you already did that with them in the process, and I appreciate that clarification. Thank you. We don't need to do it again here.
Thank you. I'm going to move us on to further comments. I would like to comment, I will be supporting Council Bill 48 tonight, and I did want to try to explain a bit why. You know, this is a narrow exemption for our school districts for the for-profit contractor hired by the school district specifically for voter-approved schools, and in my mind, that's as narrow as an exemption as I think this council would support. You know, this ensures that the right-of-way public improvements are funded. You know, that was my main concern in heading in. You know, that was my main concern in heading into this, and one of the main rationales as to why I didn't really support exemptions for, for for-profit entities because of this concern. But that has been dealt with in this, in Council Bill 48. I think this is a better solution for our schools. They get clarity to be able to move forward, and it is a good deal for the schools, as they're able to have some more money to put towards their projects. So, I think this is a win-win. And I think this, by moving this forward, keeps our community moving forward, to keep, keeps our community moving forward in a more timely manner, and so I'll be supporting this this evening. Any further comments on Council Bill 48? Councilmember Martinez?
I might be backing up a little bit, but say, because I want to not just call out the schools on this with, as far as public improvements. I don't know if this language covers that. I feel like it does, but I think it, like Councilmember Barrantyne and Councilmember Russell mentioned, I think it does specifically call the schools out in a way that only relates to public improvements, as opposed to the broader picture of use tax and public improvement. So, that's, I'm having a little bit of issue with that. And I also wonder if we leave the ordinance as is, is there any other way to formalize our decision as a council to not charge the school district use tax at all, voter-approved or not?
Who are you asking this question to? Might be helpful.
Whoever might answer.
So, it looks like you have two, two questions that you're, you're asking here, and first and foremost is whether or not there is a way to address this ordinance so that doesn't just say bond-approved projects. Typically, those are the large projects that, you know, a contractor would be brought in for, but there are several examples of smaller contracts, so, such as if they hired somebody to come in and do a mechanical permit to replace an HVAC system, which might happen, or some other amendment that they might make to their buildings, like there are plenty to do, I believe, with the Roscoe-Davidson facility on Banock Street. So, you would have to amend the language in this particular ordinance to remove that piece that just says bond-approved and talk, and be more clear to say, "Any construction project promulgated by a school district whose contractor may seek to gain, you know, gain a permit through the city." They don't gain a permit through the city for large projects, but for mechanical and plumbing alterations, I believe that they do. I'm not sure if our building officials come back in here or not, but I do believe that they, they would seek those types of permits, and so that's where a contractor could potentially pay some sort of use tax on, on equipment such as that. Second question was, I believe, related to public improvements. You feel like they're being unfairly called out? And again, maybe I didn't paint the appropriate picture. So, during the conversation discussing the exemption of the schools, right now, we have a good working relationship with the schools. In theory, in the future, if they decided to do another project, which they're probably not, because in the next two years, they're going to have all new schools, but let's just say, you know, 50 years from now, and you, you've done an exemption where they don't even have to come talk to us for anything, they're not cooperative, they don't want to have a relationship with the city, and they start to do construction, and they say, "You know what? Those public improvements, those are all yours. You have to do those." And so, we have to think not only of today, but, but also for the future.
Right. And I'm thinking of the future in, in two phases. One, just with the public improvements, not only related to the school districts.
Mm-hmm.
Related to anyone who we may charge use tax to, so that's one. And then, in the future, when all of this council is not on council anymore, all the staff has changed, is there a way with this ordinance or some other way to protect them to not have to go through this process again with us?
Perhaps what might be helpful is some comments regarding what the development review team usually identifies and what that usually means in comparison to the use tax collected. Perhaps that would be helpful.
Sure. And again, use tax being paid by contractors, they would pay potentially use tax on aggregate materials, so asphalt, concrete, those types of things. That would be used in the construction of a public improvement, and typically, that's what those public improvements would be. Specifically, as you heard from the Inglewood School District's representatives at CBRE, the projects that we're looking at that are public improvement-related mainly are ADA curbs, gutters, and sidewalks around the schools, as well as a drainage swale at Clayton Elementary School that will flow into the southwest green belt, southwest drainage green belt there. So, those, we believe that those are covered under this particular ordinance and would be, would be tax-exempt as well.
Perhaps just lining up the dollar figure as to if they paid the use tax, what would that look like versus the public improvements, and, you know, perhaps a percentage or, you know, general broad terms might be helpful to understand. And this may be the question of, could the public improvements ever be larger? Or have you ever seen a situation where the public improvements are larger than the use tax collected? Maybe that would be helpful.
It's hard to project, because again, each project is project-specific. And these two projects, obviously, their, their public improvements were roughly $300,000, I believe, a little bit over $300,000 in nature, and that's why they were trying to seek initially a rebate from the city.
And how much was their total use tax?
$660,000.
So, almost 50%? Does that seem right?
That's correct.
I don't know if that was helpful at all. Sorry, I didn't mean to hijack your question.
No, not really, but that's okay. I, I'm torn on this because I think it protects the school district, but I don't know if it protects them enough long-term. So, that's where I'm torn on this. So, I may support it in the interim, just to kind of protect their current project that they're working on, but I think maybe we should do more on this to protect them.
Thank you, Councilmember Barrantyne.
To some of your concerns on there, according to the paper, if he's, if our new reporter is accurate, or Wendy Rubin, that when they got done with all six of the schools, it was going to be over a million dollars, well over a million dollars. And so, that's their due diligence in protecting what the voters gave to them to protest this, and I agree with them. The problem with this wordsmithing of saying, "We don't charge the school, we charge the contractor," is, is really a red herring. The contractor gets paid from the school, the school pays. So, this whole, "The contractor" is, is absolutely a ridiculous argument. It was just, it's just a way to go ahead and get money, divert taxpayer money that was not intended for us, that they're tax-exempt for a reason. And then the, I, I kind of take exception, and I mean no disrespect, but I have to take exception to the way that you, you keep placing the school in some kind of position where they're not trustworthy, they just bypass us, they don't have to come to us, they're not going to be cooperative, I think you said, and, and that hasn't been the case.
Counselor, I don't believe I said that, so let's make that clear right now.
Actually, and 50 years from now, when they may not be cooperative, and where some of the verbiage that you used, I wrote it down.
I believe what I said was that 50 years from now, we could have a relationship that we do not have today. I wasn't trying to intimate that the school's underhanded, the city's underhanded, we're trying to be heavy-handed at all. What I was trying to do is mirror concerns brought up by the consensus majority of the council at the last meeting to write this ordinance.
Well, it may what you're saying.
Continue, Councilmember Barrantyne.
It may what you're saying change if you'd let me finish through the whole thing.
Okay.
I have to take some exception to making those kind of assumptions that we need to do anything to them today while they are, are cooperative. They, we have a process, according to you, that identifies public improvements, that you've already done that, that they already, in this project, in the first two schools, that they already came to the table, the public improvements were identified, they already had them in their project, and there was no reason for us to ever go after the $600,000 for the first two schools, because they had already identified those projects. What it did was divert money to us and then give control to us that the voters never intended for us to have. And this, this ordinance does not fix that, and it puts them in a precarious position for the next four schools that they need to do as well. And all we need to do in order to fix this is to go ahead and honor their tax-exempt status. So, I, that's why I can't support this. This isn't protecting them. I believe it's further, causing further problems for them by, by specifying that.
Mayor, again, I don't want to quibble with council, but this ordinance is trying to correct what is currently written in law, and we've been firmly told by council to abide by the law that we have in place. So, and, you know, we will do as the council directs, whatever you, you as a majority, we'll make happen. And I believe, again, trying to gain through disparate opinions on this matter, that's why the, why you have the ordinance that you have before you today.
And then, the other question that Ms. Councilmember Martinez brought up was that there certainly are other ways to protect the school besides this, and I had hoped that we would get that through with just making a motion to, to honor their tax-exempt status and not charge them or their contractor, and then work on what I think is a very flawed ordinance for all of the other tax-exempt entities that we have in our community, to work on that in a, in a more thoughtful manner. But I don't think this protects the schools. I think it causes more problems. That's my opinion.
Councilmember Russell?
And, in my opinion, if we do not pass this ordinance, it is not going to hurt the school right now. Everything is in place for the improvements. If we just honor their tax-exempt status, I do believe that we would have time to work on the ordinance later also. It is not going to change things right now.
Thank you. Further discussion on this item? Seeing none, please vote on Council Bill 48.
I just have one other thing.
Oh, go ahead, Councilmember Martinez.
I just want to somehow formalize that we don't charge them use tax, however that shakes out, because like I said, when we're all turned over, the whole school district is turned over. I don't want it to come up again for them or for us. So, I'm kind of torn on this. I think I might support it now, and then with the notion that we are going to address it bigger picture later.
Fair enough, and I think if I hear a majority of council, and I probably am, at some point, we could get this back on a study session.
Yeah.
Is that what you're advocating for?
I, like I said, I'm really torn on this because I feel like I, I want to protect them, and, and I think it's a step in the right direction in some parts of it, but I don't think it's general enough for the schools. But I think with the portion about the public improvements, I think it's too narrow to them.
Thank you. Councilmember Barrantyne?
If I thought it protected the schools, I'd vote for it, and it doesn't. So, I guess that's.
Thank you.
Can we call the question?
Yes. Question has been called. Please vote on Council Bill number 48.
All votes have been cast? If somebody calls the question, you have to vote to have the question called, or we could just vote on it.
I'm not relying on the call. We're done with the discussion, and we're moving forward.
And we're not moving on the call.
Thank you. Please vote.
All votes have been cast? The record show four ayes and two nays, and two nays being Councilmember Russell and Barrantyne.
Thank you. I'd like to move us on to 11C1. This is the Inglewood-Littleton Wastewater Treatment Plant Workforce Alignment and Strategy Advisement Services. The Inglewood-Littleton Wastewater Treatment Plant Supervisory Committee recommends the City of Inglewood Council approve by motion the Corolo Engineers, Inc. Professional Services Agreement for the Workforce Alignment and Strategy Advisement Services Master Agreement for the Inglewood-Littleton Wastewater Treatment Plant, in the total not to exceed amount of $100,000, which includes a contingency amount of $8,000. Our staff sources Business Services Manager Cindy Goodburn. Brought some backup.
This came up to council last month, and it was tabled because of full agenda last month. So, I wanted to provide just a real quick overview and perspective before going into the PowerPoint and give you the option if we wanted to go into the PowerPoint, additional information. So, the wastewater treatment plant employs about 80, 80 staff members, which amounts to an annual budget of around $7 million for staff. We have not done a workforce assessment to really strategically look at aligning our resources since the early 1990s. Industry has changed quite dramatically since that timeframe, and not only that, we've had significant turnover due to retirements and just an aging workforce. So, this presents a really strategic opportunity for us to bring in outside resources, different perspectives, to look how we can use those 80 employees in the most efficient manner. And we're going to do that by benchmarking against some of the best utilities in the industry and really seeing where we can best align our resources in terms of operations, particularly energy, chemical and utility management, asset management, capital projects and control systems, and data utilization. So, that's the intent of what we're doing, and for, what we're asking for today is $100,000. That represents about 1.5% of one year's annual salary, and we're hoping that this produces results for many years and, and savings for many years going into the future. And at this time, we can go, go through the bigger presentation or answer any questions you may have.
Questions from council? Councilmember Barrantyne?
The original, the, on the second page, it says the proposed amount, and then the proposed cost for the received two proposals are, and then there's $92,000 for Corolo Engineers and Brown &amp; Caldwell is $91,000. Why are both of them listed? I mean, we're not paying both of them.
We're just trying to share the information that this was a competitive bid. We're trying to share the pricing, and it, that's, that's information. We are only suggesting that council approve a contract with Corolo Engineers.
Right. Because there was only the one, so it just made it seem as if there might be another one for Brown &amp; Caldwell, but you were just, okay, it just could have been worded better.
We have no intention of hiring.
Here's the two proposals, and we're picking Corolo instead. Okay. And then, have you reviewed the executive management team, the strategic plan that was developed in July of 2016?
Yes.
That identified the leadership and management, workforce planning and development as the two of the five rooms for improvement. Did not that plan take into account, at that time, they knew that we were going to be losing 60% of our upper management at that time?
Absolutely. And what this study is doing is now that we're transitioning that management team, it's really providing that new management team the resources to be very successful in leading the organization going forward. It's going to provide them the benchmarks they need to be able to track progress, to monitor how we're doing, and it'll also provide resources in the industry to allow them to do their jobs most effectively.
And I, and I thought that the contract actually went into detail, and, and I understood, but when the verbiage that's being used in here is to benchmark current leader competencies against the wastewater industry best practices, if we're benchmarking the current leader competencies, we just hired our current leadership based off of this strategic plan. And so, it made it seem as if this whole process was to go ahead and identify leadership problems that were identified with leadership that we no longer have. So, I'm, I'm confused at how we're going to gain something when we just went through this process. I mean, aren't we using the, wasn't it transformation point that we used? I mean, we paid like 90, $70,000, $90,000 to do this at the wastewater treatment plant. So, I'm just seeing this not as not that it's not necessary, just that it's repetitive, that it was already done.
You are right. We are, we did use transformation, transformation point, and that in part led to the, the reorganization of a staff, and, and you're seeing that. What this study and project is, is to empower those staff and to empower the organization moving forward. It's, it's, these are the benchmarks that we're going to measure ourselves against. These are the performance metrics that represent industry best practice. These are the performance benchmarks that we are going to be developing towards. And when you hire staff, you hope that they have all of those.
Wow.
But, but that, to be perfectly honest, that doesn't always happen, and you want to transform the entire organization. So, you're trying to fill in wherever there are weaknesses, and that's what this study is going to help us to.
I guess what I'm concerned about is that then we're constantly in survey mode and not implementation mode. I mean, this is less than a year that we had the transformation point and the strategic plan that put the new leadership in place with information of where those shortfalls were. And if we're, I mean, is, is that, is there anything that can be provided on where we went with the strategic plan that just got implemented in October? And how we're doing on that plan and that $90,000 worth of information that we got, and where we're at in that process before we start a new process and $100,000 to reevaluate again?
This concept of constantly reevaluating, the, the record doesn't really speak to that. The last time we did a study like this was in the early 1990s. I think Transformation Points Work a year ago pointed that they're, pointed to the need for a reanalysis of staffing competencies and the overall alignment.
Right.
My hiring was. My hiring was also a recognition of and acknowledgement of the Transformation Point work. This is the next step in that process. And I can't say how it was presented, but that, I think that $90,000 for Transformation Point was a very strong first step. This is, is also a very strong second step, and I'm here telling you.
Do we have anything on that first step that shows how that led to this, so that I know that we had a good use of that $90,000? And then I guess the second part would be that what you stated and what some of the contract is not what the verbiage of this is saying we need this for, because what it's saying is that, that this is to evaluate and benchmark current leader competent, leadership competencies against the area that was identified, which was leadership, management, workforce, planning and development, which wasn't what necessarily you were kind of bringing forward, that you were looking for them to evaluate. But that's what the verbiage of this is telling me that it's for. So I just, it didn't match.
I apologize for that. I, I believe, I believe I'm saying the same things. It's just to benchmark leadership competencies and organization strengths in these critical areas so that we can, can, we can lead forward.
I appreciate your, your understanding that $190,000 for this kind of process in less than a year is an awful lot of money, and we need to get some feedback on exactly how this is working and what we're doing, because we're still hearing that these are still the same concerns. So that's my question. Thanks.
Thank you. Further questions for staff? Seeing none, entertain a motion on eleven C one?
Moved.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Further discussion on eleven C one? Seeing none, please vote.
All votes have been cast. The record show four ayes and two nays, the two nays being Councilmember Russell and Barrington.
Let's move on to Agenda Item twelve. This is general discussion. We do have an executive session this evening. I would ask for a motion to move us into executive session for a conference with the city attorney for the purpose of receiving legal advice on specific legal questions under CRS Section twenty-six.
Can we have a break first, prior to going into executive?
Four oh two, four B.
So moved?
Thank you. Is there a second?
Can we have a break prior to going into executive session?
Yep, I heard you. Thank you. Is there a second?
A second.
Thank you. Been asked to take a five-minute recess. Let's go ahead and do that with this motion on the table there. Thank you.
Not going to share.
Glad to see you. Yeah, thank you, Jesus. It was bad for a while. It was bad stuff. Don't recover as quick as I used to.
...
Okay.
(cough) (cough) Yeah. There's. It's a ledger. Yeah, okay, that could be it. Yeah. (cough) Uh, I think you're, you're, you're working. Right. That's good.
You know, before we move to conclude the executive session, I would like to note for the record that the time is now ten oh seven PM and the executive session has been concluded. The participa- the participants were Mayor Protem Gillett, councilmembers Martinez, Yates, Barantine, Russell, myself, City Manager Eric Keck, as well as City Attorney Allison McKinney Brown. For the record, if any person who participated in the executive session believes in any substantial discussion of any manners, any matters not included in the motion to go into the executive session occurred during the session, or that any improper action occurred during the session in violation of the open meetings law, I would ask you to state your concerns for the record. Seeing none, I would entertain a motion to conclude our exec session. Thank you. Is there a motion? Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Please vote.
All votes have been cast. Record shows six lies.
Thank you. I'd like to move us on to councilmember's choice. Would anybody like to kick us off this evening?
Councilmember Barantine?
Go ahead.
Oh, sorry. Mayor Protem.
Yeah, I just want to thank again our, our wastewater staff for an amazing tour. Once again, I was the only one attending the tour, which was disheartening, but it is what it is. But we had three Littleton councilmembers there. And it was very well done. A lot of time and effort put into that tour by staff. And it was just appreciated that our city attorney went with us. And we had a great time and saw a lot of waste. So, and so it was, it was good. But I just want to thank you and I want to wish you all a happy Fourth of July. That's it.
Thank you, sir. Councilmember Martinez?
Yeah, I was not able to make that tour. I really want to go next year. The date didn't work out for me. So, next year, I definitely would love to go. Also, just want to say, we had a great community concert kickoff for Energy Inglewood, Energy Efficient Inglewood. And I just want to thank all the staff and volunteers from Keep Inglewood Beautiful who were there. We had about over a hundred visitors to the city booth, which was really great. And we had about fifty folks fill out our survey. So, we got some good feedback on the type of information that folks are interested in. So, really excited to keep moving with that. And like Councilmember Gillett said, hope everyone has a safe and happy Fourth.
Thank you. Councilmember Yates?
I wish I could have made it to the tour, although after the grueling schedule of interviews for boards and commissions and CML and then all of the stuff that we did this last month, it just, it was a lot of hours that I just needed to take care of some business issues. So, unfortunately, I couldn't make it to it. I'd love to do it, let's see, in August, isn't the next one, to do it in August. And beyond that, have a great Fourth.
Thank you. Councilmember Barantine?
First, I want to ask a quick question. There were additional papers that were put up here. Was there anything different in these that were provided for eleven A, one and two? Was the, were they any different than what was given to us in our packet?
I'm uncertain of that. I'd have to actually check with a clerk.
Pardon? Oh, okay. That was the only difference? There was no, no, I just was like, that's a lot to try and go through before you, but I appreciate you clarifying that. Thank you. Once you've seen, taken the tour out there, it's enough. And I heard Allison, our new city attorney, made the comment that she believes that anytime there is a quorum, a majority of council that attends any function, that she is to be in attendance, I decided that it would be in her best interest to skip the tour for the plant and how we spread manure. You have your own issues to deal with us while we're in council here. So, I think once is enough. It's worth it. Councilmember Martinez, so at least once you got to go. But I'm glad that there wasn't a majority of us so that you could stay home. The transformation point report for, got brought up again. And I want to make sure that we're following through on that evaluation piece, both for the, for the city manager that we follow up on that, so that before we spend another hundred thousand, we know where we're at in the process and how that works, so that we get the end result of evaluation and assessment of what we spent the, you know, seventy or ninety thousand for before we go into this hundred thousand. I would appreciate, I think that would be a good exercise to see. Maybe it'll make me feel more comfortable that that hundred thousand is getting passed, although I'm sure that that'll be brought up at the joint meeting as well. And then the transformation point report that was, has been brought up numerous times, this ninety-page report that we paid for, whether it was, needs to be redacted or what's going on, so that we have some of that information as well. So, I know you were still working on that. The Inglewood Housing Authority, I did do a council request and for the city attorney, the, apparently it got put to the housing, or the community development department. And what I had requested was regarding how the city can, if they desire to prevent or have any kind of control over the senior living project, the six-story building, you know, that, I haven't seen any plans or anything, but apparently they, that's what they're wanting to do at the thirty-five fifty-five South Clarkson Street, and whether we have any way of preventing them from gaining a tax-exempt status on that, or prior to them kind of soliciting our housing authority for doing it. And I know that Mayor Jefferson has talked to that board. I believe that you have gone there and discussed issues about open meetings and rec, and their documentation and the recordings that they need to do, so that our citizens know what's going on with that board as well. But I do believe that there are some opportunities that we have. But this answer from the Harold Stitt, the senior planner, I'm not sure, just said that, no, the city has no authority. And I've gone and just, I didn't have a lot of time to check on this, but I did go and check. And we, we do. I believe that we do have other ways to make requirements of any project or development that are going into the city. And we certainly have control over developments going in that would affect our tax base. It's not just, it's in the purview of this, the Inglewood Housing Authority, to grant a tax exemption in a partnership. But we certainly have control over the development when it's going in and going into planning and zoning. So, I'd like for you to take a look at that if you could. I appreciate the community development department looking at it, but I'd like a little bit more info on that. I attended the Loretto Heights community along with councilmember Russell. It was well-attended. I believe there were probably about eighty, ninety people there. And this is a huge project. The potential of Dartmouth going through that property, the additional density that could happen there to a landmark in our community. I mean, this is landmark for the south metro area is, is that school chapel. And then the historic buildings that they're dealing with, the chapel, along with the sixty sisters who are buried in a cemetery on that property as well. And while that's in Denver, I greatly appreciate the community organizer and, what was the councilmember's name from Denver?
Kevin Flynn.
Yeah. They were very interested in making sure that the whole Tri-Cities area there, Sheridan, Denver, Littleton, and Inglewood, all had a, had some skin in the game. We would have to deal with the density if they put that in, the, the infrastructure and trying to push that in, whether our communities can handle that and what we'd all kind of like. I think that's very nice of them to want to have our input in that. And there was a representative from Sheridan, I believe somebody from Littleton was there as well. So, they really did a beautiful job of reaching out. And that can have a huge impact on that, on the entire corridor coming through. So, greatly appreciate that. And a little shout out to the historical issues that are going on there. I would really like to see the meetings, the upcoming meetings be put on our website as well, so that, or at least reach out to our historic preservation board and the society on issues that are going on, on that property as well, if they're coming up. I was just surprised at how many, I go, well, that's kind of nice we went. But then I had so many people come and go, I went to school there, or that affects us, or it's a landmark. And there really was a lot more interest in, from our Inglewood community on this project. So, if they're inviting us to have a say in it, then I would like to make sure that people have an opportunity to know when those meetings are.
So, we've just, I can contact Kevin Flynn then if that's appropriate?
Yeah. He seems to be connected, yeah, with, I'm not, I wasn't sure who organized it at first, but it seemed to be a community piece. But it was very, it was very interesting. So, I'm glad I went to it.
Sorry, just to interject real quick. There was a neighborhood captain who contacted me. I can probably give the contact information. I think it was put together by their, you know, neighborhood captains, if you will.
Well, and they have a little bit different organization that I would like to explore at some point, where they, he was going into that they specifically identify neighbors, neighborhoods, put a board together, and then they have some kind of official standing for zoning or something. I'm not quite sure if a meeting like that is the best way to get kind of in-depth information on how their process works. But it was, it was interesting. It was very interesting. And they had representation from all of these different identified neighborhoods that have some kind of seat at the table when it comes to if they do a PUD or zoning change. So, it would be interesting to see what that process is as well. But, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Russell?
And just to add to that, this whole caveat, they, they did say that private property is just what it is, private property. So, the citizen input, well, probably only control zoning and things like that. But hopefully, actually, I think maybe they're, they want a grassroots movement to get somebody to buy that property. There were four, four or five Inglewood residents there who've gone to school and speaking for the historical aspect of it. And actually, the gentleman's name is Jim Gibson, and I also have his contact information. I can email that to you. It was very informative and great to see grassroots passion. I think there are seventy-seven acres there in total. So, I just want to, is there anything that we can do tonight to resolve the problem for Ms. Weber and Ms. Faletti?
I don't believe so. But, you know, I don't know if the city attorney's office wants to chime in. I wish there was. I wish we could grant a variance, I feel like.
Actually, I believe you've got a great process. I, I haven't visited with them. It's not appropriate for me to visit with them. I'm not sure what their concern is about the variance process. But you've got a great process in place, which allows situations like theirs to be heard by the community, to give them the opportunity to meet their individual needs. And I think, well, and I'm, I don't know, but as soon as they get themselves on the variance agenda with the incredible staff support, because the staff really does support them and their particular concerns, I just think that this is one of those situations that your variance process was built for. And the city has agreed that they won't take any action toward the fence, just to give them some time just to do the variance. So, while they may not be happy about the variance process, I just think they're the textbook case. And it's the reason why you have it, is to protect individual situations.
Okay. I appreciate that. And then I have one other question, because I believe this is not the first time that staff has told people things that are not accurate and creates problems for individuals. Is, can staff, I know you've said it, the staff cannot tell them that. But when staff does, what are the consequences for that happening?
There may be individual consequences to a staff member exceeding their authority. And of course, it would not be appropriate to discuss any of those things in an open meeting. But we all, all of us as citizens, have an equal duty to know the law. And, and having an individual who happens to be employed by the city say, wait a second, I think the law means X, when in fact, it doesn't, doesn't create an additional burden on the city to say, oh, in your case, it's not going to be that way. So, as far as the city, probably limited consequences for the individual staff member, that's where the problem lies.
Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to mayor's choice. I did have just a couple of things. Did want to highlight that I got a nice tour of Hope this last week from their executive director, Bart. I apologize. I don't have his name here in front of me, but the executive director, Bart. I actually encouraged him to reach out to other councilmembers. I think this is a great organization, totally privately funded, right here on Broadway, right here in Inglewood, that we need to help support. They do have a thrift store function. They have a, you know, food pantry that's only open a couple of days a week. But they told me that anytime anybody knocks on the door and they're hungry, they take care of them. And so, you know, I think hopefully, we as a community can rile around that and help support that. I also wanted to highlight, this week I attended the grant award presentation from Excel Energy at Big Brothers and Big Sisters of Colorado. Big Brothers, Big Sisters of Colorado, as well as Inglewood Cultural Arts were grant recipients from Excel's foundation program. You know, Excel's been a wonderful partner for us, not only funding this E3 program, but now also funding to the tune of, I think, fifteen thousand and ten thousand dollars each. So, I just wanted to give a shout out to Excel and thank them for their participation with so many of our community needs and organizations. I wanted to just second councilmember Martinez's thoughts on E3 kickoff. I thought it went really well. This is something that the community is really engaged and excited about, and I'm excited to keep that moving forward. This last Friday also was a final Friday. Still very successful. I think, you know, starting to vary on different levels of degrees of how successful for different businesses. I'm actually in the process, I think, of looking for different types of groups who we could market towards to maybe do bar crawls or those type of things. I'll be trying to work with the Inglewood Chamber to try to get them to organize a bar crawl for this next month, here in July. But if anybody's got any ideas on who I might be able to contact and try to drum up some additional audiences, please let me know, as I would appreciate that. Also, just want to let you know, I attended Auto RV America's grand opening on Saturday. They've got some very cool trailer as well as RV kind of options. Randy Penn looked to, looking, was looking and is almost in purchase mode there. So, I think we might have got them, several RVs already sold. But please do visit them for your used auto as well as RV needs. I did want to mention quickly that the, I did meet with the Inglewood Housing Authority, since it has been mentioned a few times. Just want to clarify or just throw it out there for the council, for their benefit, so they kind of know. I did get an email from the chair and decided to meet with her. She did bring along Jerry Graeber, the executive director, as well as another member. I think we had a really good conversation about how to increase communication between the two bodies. Talked about scheduling them for a joint session with council in August, you know, discuss some open meetings issues as well as their mission and the council itself's mission. I thought it was a good first step in increasing communication with that body. So, if anybody's got any questions or concerns about that, feel free to contact me. I think that's all I had. Happy Fourth of July. The, I think that's all I had. Let's go to city manager.
Thank you, mayor. Just a couple of things. Obviously, tomorrow, the events that are occurring at both Bellevue and Cornerstone, these people will be camping out early, I'm sure. But most of the, most of the booths and the vendors will be there at three PM, starting at three. Their concert's at seven, and then fireworks at dark. Counsel, I do need to inform you that the Inglewood Employees Association and the city have come to an impasse over economic issues. And according to the Charter on Collective Bargaining, the Charter basically enunciates that should there be an impasse from the union, they have to submit a letter to us by July one, which they did submit at four fifty, approximately four fifty PM on Friday, which did not allow us to get anything into the packet, obviously for you regarding this today. The process is as follows. Before, jointly, the EH, the EEA Employees Association and my office have to present to you, the council, the names of three arbitrators before July tenth. We will, because of, again, the way meetings are scheduled, we're going to have to submit those to you electronically. On July seventeenth, though, we expect that we will be coming forward with those three names with a resolution for you to approve, naming an arbitrator who will hear the, hear the economic case for both the city and from the employee union. But I just want to make sure that you're aware of that particular instance. And that's all that I have this evening.
Thank you. Quick question on that, and something else I had. Was the arbitrator issue, would council be involved in any executive session to get some details regarding the impasse situation prior to naming an arbitrator?
Good question. I have not had an impasse here at the city of Inglewood under these particular prescriptions. Previous, previous employers going through that and an impasse, the answer would be yes. I think that I'll have to work with our outside counsel, who has been assisting us, from Mountain State's Employers Council, to see if in fact, that would be appropriate at this point in time.
Thank you. You know, and I forgot my other, I remembered my other comment, which was just basically regarding kind of the variance issue. And I think, you know, what we could do, I think, to help these ladies out, is start to discuss, you know, because I think their main concern is what if the variance isn't granted? And we could start to discuss, what are the solutions if it's not granted? I think that's where the rubber really meets the road. And if we can give them some assurances prior to heading into that, I think that we can stave off some of these issues. City Attorney's Choice?
Briefly, I, I did attend the tour on Thursday of last week. I anticipated that there would be more of you, so I showed up for that quorum. But...
So, we were on the bus, I assume?
I was on that bus with everybody else. I have to tell you that I've only been here three months. And I am falling in love with this city. You guys are amazing. The, the staff are so intelligent about such a broad variety of things. And everyone is so intensely focused on getting to the right answers. And I tell you what, I was out there tramping around fifteen square miles of farmland, of dry land farmland, and, and watching this city participate in, in creating no bio footprint from our solid waste plant. It's just, I have to tell you, I've been raving about that tour to everybody who listened to me for the past four days. But it's just one element of how amazing this city is. And I think people are sick of me saying that. But every time I turn around, I see something else fascinating, amazing. And I know, as councilmembers, you guys are incredibly proud to represent this city. But I want you to know, I'm incredibly proud to work for this city.
Right, right. We could conclude all of our meetings like this, actually. I don't mind that at all. And anything else, ma'am? With that, we are hereby adjourned. Thank you, everyone.
Joe? Joe? Joe?